Okay, guys, ready? All right. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call to order the City Council meeting of San Carlos, Republican Agency Housing Authority regular meeting for November 27, 2017. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Are there any changes to the order of the agenda?
None from staff this evening, Mr. Mayor.
No changes? Okay, move on. Mr. Rubens, do we have any report from closed session?
No reports tonight, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Next item we have is public comment, people wishing to address the City Council on matters not on the posted agenda. We have a number of three or four, looks like, folks that would like to speak. It's basically two minutes. And let's get this thing organized here. All right. The first one I have is see Aaron Friday. These are items, again, not on the posted agenda. See Aaron Friday? I'm sorry? Okay.
I would like to request that the council decline devote for Matt Grocott to be the next San Carlos mayor. His disposition is not fit for the title, mayor, as evidenced by his remarks at the most recent civil -- city council meeting in which he chastised a priest for his community efforts and insulted and attacked the audience. Mr. Grocott seems to care more about the opinions of interlopers, that is, non-residents, AKA the NRA, henchmen, as it was abundantly clear that it was lost on him that the overwhelming majority of San Carlos residents who voiced their opinions concerning the gun shop were in favor of the moratorium. Mr. Grocott was also on the wrong side of the welcoming city decision. Last, Mr. Grocott has forwarded emails by concerned citizens to publications without their permission. Simply, as he does not represent what I believe to be the general progressive nature of our town, I do not want him to be the face of San Carlos. Thank you.
Your comments? Okay. Next item, our next person speaking is David Ronstein from Belmont.
Good evening, Mayor Grisilli and members of the City Council. Last Tuesday, I had the pleasure of inviting the mayor to my classroom. I'm a teacher at Crowmont High School. And he graciously accepted and spent the entire day with us, speaking to four of my classes, senior classes, dealing with government. And this was after I saw the last meeting that you had, where you spoke about the moratorium and other issues. And so I just wanted to spend a couple of seconds here to thank the mayor for coming. You were very gracious with your time. We appreciate all the issues that you spoke about, this one, but also about how you ran for council, issues that you felt that were important, getting people involved in the community. And I think it does a great job in breaking down barriers when you can see your city council representing you and other communities to come into the classroom. And so I wanted to thank you. And as a result, we have one of my students here today, here to listen to what's going on with the council meeting. So, thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council, for your time here. I'm putting this up to talk about what I'm here, or show what I'm here to talk about is the Carlos Club sign. It's been almost two years to the day since the council voted to amend the city's sign ordinance to protect the Carlos Club neon sign and to hold the owner of the club accountable to repair the damage from the changes he made, all without permit. The repair to the neon tubing he took out has not been made, and the sign has been dark for months. And now it appears the bar is closed, and it seems at this point nothing will happen. The Carlos Club sign is revered in architecture, neon, and signage circles, and it's well-known around the country. I've spoken with a number of experts who wrote about the significance of preserving the sign. Deborah Jane Seltzer, a noted photographer who's documented thousands of vintage signs nationwide, says that the Carlos Club sign from 1947 is a no-brainer candidate for landmark status, deserves whatever protection, maintenance, assistance that the city can provide. It's one of the most important signs in the Bay Area and one of the most outstanding signs in California, and it should be revered by the city of San Carlos. I'm delivering to the council several letters from neon and architecture experts adamantly supporting the preservation of this sign, including the Historic Neon Network and the Art Deco Society of California. Nationwide, there's an aggressive push to preserve beautiful neon. San Carlos has a stellar example right around the corner. Ordinance 18.22.120 calls for an historic sign to be maintained and in good repair. And here we are, two years later, and the sign is dark, the neon is missing, and the character of the busiest intersection in town has been lost. So, Council, what will you do to follow up on the ordinance so that the Carlos Club sign is restored to all its glory? Thank you.
Your comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Through the chair. I don't remember, are we allowed to, in response, ask staff questions about whether or not there are plans in place to get the sign repaired?
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Okay.
If Mr. Rubens isn't --
Jeff, or Mr. Rubens, I think it's a Jeff question.
Just a general question is allowed under public comment, but anything more than just a general response to that question, I think, would be outside the scope of public comment.
I can defer to more detail here from Al, but my recollection going back was that all the elements of the neon that the owner of the building had were put back. But the issue was, when he bought the building, there were a number of elements that were broken and missing. And it was not within the city's purview, at the time, anyway, to force them to rebuild the sign.
All right. Thank you.
All right. The last speaker I have for public comment is Laura Fanukey.
Good evening, Mayor Grisilli, members of the council and city staff. I'm Laura Fanukey from Hip Housing, tonight presenting you with Hip Housing's 2018 calendar. This is the 16th year that I've been coming before the council to distribute our calendar, which we use as an outreach tool to educate the community about our affordable housing programs. We had hundreds of kindergarteners who, fifth graders, draw a picture of their home and then write a statement about what their home means to them. I just wanted to tell you a few highlights of what we were able to accomplish in 2017. Hip Housing was able to purchase our 16th affordable housing project in Redwood City, a seven-unit apartment complex with also a commercial space. We also partnered with Mid Peninsula Housing on them setting aside four of their apartment units at a project in Daly City for families in our self-sufficiency program, who are families that are working towards their career and educational goals. And then lastly, in our home sharing program, we received national attention this year through being featured in a publication through AARP's Livable Communities and also on the Department of Housing and Urban Development's website, featuring home sharing as an affordable housing strategy to create housing here in communities and also to keep seniors safe in their housing. So, we're very proud of our accomplishments in 2017, but also, more importantly, that we were able to house over 1,400 people through our programs this year. And we can't do that great work without your support, so I thank you very much for that. I hope that you'll attend our calendar party on December 7, where you will meet our 12 winners, or 13 winners, actually. And I'm just wishing you a happy and healthy 2018. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. All right. Move on to item six, which consent calendar, consent calendar items are usually done by one motion unless someone wants to remove them. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move. We approve City Council Consent Calendar Items A through Q and the Housing Authority Consent Calendar Item R. Do I read the ordinance now?
Yes.
Okay. And Adopt Ordinance 1527, an ordinance of the City Council of the city of San Carlos approving a zoning district map correction designing, excuse me, designating 10 properties on the west side of Elm Street, APNs 045-311-0702160, to a zoning district of RM-59, multifamily, medium density.
Second. All right. Any discussion?
Yeah, I wanted to pull item J.
J? Want to remove, revise your motion, please?
All right, I'll just amend the motion to remove item J.
There you go. There you go. Second. Moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Overt?
Yes.
And Mayor Grisilli?
Yes. We'll take this now. We'll do J now. So, Mr. Grocott?
So, item J is to extend a contract with Neil Martin and Associates. And for quite a number of years, I've been asking to have this contract put out for RFP. And so, the reason I pulled it, so I can vote accordingly.
Okay. Mr. Malpe, do you have a comment on that?
Yeah, the, I certainly recall Councilmember Grocott's comments in the past. That's what led to the original RFP that this contract's operating under. This is the last year, the last one-year extension that's included in this contract, so next year, the staff will be going out to RFP.
We will.
Yes, we will.
Makes me feel more comfortable.
All right. So, do we have a motion on J?
Move approval of 6J. Second.
All right. Moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Overt?
Yes.
And Mayor Grisilli?
Yes. All right. Thank you. All right. Moving on. Item 7A, consideration of adopting ordinance, extending urgency ordinance number 1526 pursuant to Government Code Section 65858A, imposing moratorium on retail establishments. Selling ammunition or firearms is defined in Municipal Code Section 9.24.010 in the city of San Carlos for 10 months and 15 days. Before we get started, there maybe are some folks that weren't here two weeks ago. Just want to explain what's going to happen, so that you'll know, in case you're new here. First thing is, we'll have a staff report, or probably fairly short staff report. The council will then ask questions of the staff, if they have any. And after that, we will have public comment. And apparently, we have about 30 or so speakers, which works out to about two minutes, about an hour's worth of comment. As I mentioned before, when you make your public comment, I would appreciate it if everyone is respectful in speaking, as well as listening. Some folks are going to agree completely with what folks are saying at the dais or on, up there, at the mic, others are not. But I appreciate no cheering, booing, et cetera. Keep it civil. We had it civil two weeks ago. I think it was one of the best meetings I think we've ever had with the crowd that we had. And hopefully, we can continue that this evening. So, appreciate it. Mr. Malpe, is there a staff report?
Yeah, it's going to be presented by our city attorney, Greg Rubens.
Okay. Mr. Rubens?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of the public here tonight. What's on tonight's agenda is an extension of the urgency ordinance imposing a moratorium on new firearms and ammunition retail establishments in the city of San Carlos. As you can see in the staff report, with, prior to the moratorium, there was no additional regulation for firearm and ammunition retail establishments in the city. The purpose of the moratorium was to allow the city to study the issue and determine what the most appropriate regulations and zoning provisions that might apply to these types of retail establishments. So, Government Code Section 68858 specifically allows the city council, after the initial 45-day moratorium at a public hearing, to extend the urgency ordinance, in this case, a moratorium, for 10 months and 15 days. So, that's the recommendation of staff to extend the full time, although we may not need that whole amount of time. It seems prudent that, given the complexity of the issue and some of the changing dynamics in this area of the law, there's been a lot of recent cases, and there are some cases coming through the courts right now, that it'd be prudent to have the maximum amount of time that's allowed by law. You'll see attached to the staff report is a new ordinance that would extend for the full 10 months and 15 days from the expiration of the 45-day ordinance. Also included in the staff report, and I don't, I won't go into all the details, but it includes a summary of what happened at the last meeting. It includes the issue of the procedure that you need to follow tonight. It includes references to additional findings that are included in the new ordinance extending based upon some of the additional input that you received from the public. This extension, just like the initial urgency ordinance, requires four votes of the five-member city council, four fifths vote to approve the extension. So, I'm here for any, any questions of the council. You can ask me questions now or after the public comment.
Questions for Mr. Rubens now? Mr. Grocott?
So, I had two questions. One is, you had mentioned the law that allows for extending. So, I take it that in advance of the moratorium expiring, the law allows to extend it within a certain window of when that expiration is going to take place?
That's correct. The law, in order for us to extend, we must extend before the expiration of the 45-day period. So, in this case, because of the limited number of meetings where there's space on the agenda, as was reported at the last meeting, this is the only available meeting to extend within the 45-day period. The next meeting that the council has is its reorganization meeting, and then the meeting after that is canceled. It's on Christmas Day, so the next meeting after that is beyond the 45 days.
But it doesn't say anything in terms of, so it has to be within those 45 days, but it doesn't say, you know, not until you have two weeks to go or something of that sort?
No, there's not.
Yeah, okay. And then I just wanted, I don't know if this is for you, Greg, necessarily, but if there's been any activity with staff regarding what the moratorium is supposed to be giving us time to do? So, have we, I heard last time something about the possibility of hiring a consultant to look at the issue. Have we started drafting an RFP? Have we looked around for consultants? Do we have any information on that at all?
I think I can answer that. I have started to review appropriate consultants and have, have a draft of the RFP that will be ready to go in the next week to try and obtain some consultants that would assist me and the staff in reviewing the area of the law that were, that's the subject of the moratorium. And we, the other aspects of what I've been looking at in conjunction with Lisa Costa-Standers is what other cities have done and what other counties have done. Since the last meeting, one of the, one of the members of the public talked about a case out of Alameda, and that case actually did come down last summer, just in the summer of 2017. I wasn't quite familiar with it, but it was a decision by the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals under federal law, and it involved a facial challenge to the county ordinance that regulated, from a zoning perspective, where gun stores could go. And that case found that gun sellers, as opposed to the general public, and there's a distinction between what the rights of a gun seller, as opposed to the rights of the public, to own arms. And that case actually is something I'm studying. It's 64 pages long, but it's one of the things that I've been looking at since the last meeting.
And then just one more question, if I may?
Sure.
The RFP will involve hiring a consultant. If the fee is under a certain amount, it doesn't need to get council approval? Do we anticipate it needing council approval?
That's, part of the RFP is going to ask for rates, and if, and if the proposals come in higher than council approval, we will have to come to the council. I think because of the nature of this, it's probably going to come back to you anyway, because of the nature of the item, but--
And that would be at our reorg meeting, or would we wait till January?
I don't know. Jeff, you might have some thoughts on how we would process that?
Yeah, I did have some thoughts on how we would process that. Even if we put out the RFP today, typically, we'd provide for a minimum of three weeks for responses. So, it would definitely not come back at your next meeting. Could potentially come back at your first meeting. My plan was, even if it came in within my signing authority, was to agendize it and bring it back to council, just given the sensitive nature of the issue. I thought the council might have an interest in approving this themselves.
Thank you.
All right. Any questions? Okay. All right. So, we'll start the public comment. I have a timer up here. We'd like to keep it to two minutes. We did that last time. Everybody's very cooperative. If you could be succinct in your comments, that'd be great. And again, respect all the way around, I really think, would be terrific. I really appreciate it. I really appreciate it if everyone followed that dictum. First speaker, I'm going to name three names so that we can get folks ready to go here. Danielle Lacampagne, followed by Rob Anson, followed by Kathy Beard.
Good evening, council. My name is Danielle, and I've lived in San Carlos for 12 years, and I support the moratorium. Over the last year, there's been a lot of talk about promoting civic involvement nationwide, and I think we can safely say that our little city has reached a new heightened civic engagement over the last few weeks. What you are seeing is a powerful mobilization of a community that's concerned. Why mobilize? Because insufficient gun regulations have failed us. Why mobilize? Because our gun death rate is rising, from suicides to accidents to violence. The variation that explains this? We have 88 guns per 100 people in the United States, and they get into the wrong hands over and over again. During my training as a social worker years ago at a spinal cord injury unit at a hospital, I met many children paralyzed by accidental discharge and gun violence. I cannot articulate what it feels like to counsel a sweet nine-year-old in a wheelchair whose mother, mother's boyfriend accidentally shot him. Why mobilize? Because residents of San Carlos want time to give input into requirements of any new stores that sell guns, and we want you, the city council, to consider smart policy, even if there is a cost burden to the city as a result of this request. My mother, who retired as a sergeant in the police force in 2014, my grandfather was a police officer, one of my close friends is a retired marshal. I know people in San Carlos who are diligent gun owners who lock their guns in safes. No one is disputing that there are many responsible gun owners. This community outpour is not directed at them. The City of San Carlos has not revisited the issue of regulations for stores selling guns for decades, so it falls on us and you to do so now. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Rob Anson, followed by Kathy Beard, followed by Rebecca Dodson. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Rob, and my wife and I and our two teenage boys have lived in San Carlos for 12 years. I'm in favor of continuing the moratorium on any new weapons stores opening in San Carlos. We do already have one. I felt heartbroken and angry about the mass shootings that increasingly capture our attention, but these only make up 2% of gun deaths each year. In the United States, people in states with higher gun ownership rates endure a nine-times higher likelihood of death by gun than people in states with lower gun ownership rates. 44% of Americans have stated they personally know someone who's been shot. 30% of gun owners with children stated they keep a loaded gun that is easily accessible at all times when home. Guns kill nearly 1,300 children each year in the U.S. Research, statistics, and common sense suggest that more guns mean greater harm to any number of us and our families. And to the argument that gun violence happens despite regulation, let's talk about drunk driving. Despite a steep 49% decline in drunk-driving fatalities since 91, drunk-driving incidents do still occur. Yet it'd be foolish to point to a drunk-driving accident and claim that those efforts to address the problem don't work. People are dying each day due to our gun culture. Is someone's right to own a weapon more valuable than someone's right to survive a concert or a child to live through a day at school? My son's middle school is being updated for the Times. Heavy steel fencing is being erected around the campus. We've talked about the lockdown drills they routinely practice at school, and they scare him. I felt sad and angry that our children must live in a world that we adults insist on making less safe. We never had lockdown drills as kids. I believe other countries have shown us that more gun freedom is not the answer. Our city needs time to weigh our zoning laws and options to determine what makes sense for our community. It's our town, and it's up to us to decide what makes sense. Finally, I hope the city will use its funds to meet any legal challenges to our autonomy. Thanks.
Your time is up. Thank you, Mr. Anson. Kathy Beard, followed by Rebecca Dodson, followed by Andrew Kovacs.
Thank you for giving me the time to speak today. I'm a resident of San Carlos, and I've lived here for 35 years. I'm in favor of extending the urgency ordinance for the moratorium on gun stores. We need the time. There are many opinions. There are many nuances. It's worth understanding what the residents of this city want for San Carlos. It's worth finding out how other cities like us have handled this issue. It's worth understanding what we can legally require for security and safety. Please extend the moratorium. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Rebecca Dodson, followed by Andrew Kovacs, followed by C. Erin Friday.
Hi, my name's Rebecca Dodson. I'm a San Carlos resident of two years, a mother, and an attorney. I support extending the moratorium for the full one year for many reasons, but largely because, as many have pointed out, the presence of more guns in a community makes that community less safe. I believe extending the moratorium will give San Carlos the time it truly needs to study this issue and craft a well-thought-out, well-drafted ordinance that will withstand judicial scrutiny and serve the interests of the community. I am hopeful that with this extra time, San Carlos will be able to enact an ordinance that has the effect of preventing Turner's Outdoorsman from opening permanently. Although I understand that this may open San Carlos up to litigation, as taxpayers, my husband and I both would support the diversion of city funds to defending any prospective lawsuit. Furthermore, as an attorney, I am one of a growing group of local lawyers who have organized around this issue and who are willing to devote their time to it however they can pro bono. So I ask you, please, do not allow the threat of litigation by Turner's to be a factor in your decision-making on either extending the moratorium or in crafting a prospective ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Andrew Kovacs, followed by C. Erin Friday, followed by Laura Palmer-Lohan.
Thank you for your time today. I'm a San Carlos father, husband, and resident. I'd like to make one point. This is not a Second Amendment issue. The Second Amendment does not confer the right to sell firearms. Now, I understand the right to bear arms necessarily involves the right to purchase them. But stopping Turner's from opening would not meaningfully constrain access to guns in San Carlos. We already have two businesses that sell guns in San Carlos, and our residents can acquire firearms from them and other retailers in our county. There's clearly no public need for another firearms retailer in our city. So this is really just about the kind of city that we want to build, the kind of city that we want to live in, the kind of city that we want to raise our children in. On this question, my fellow residents have shared their views in a clear, unequivocal, and overwhelming way. The kind of city we want to live in does not include this new gun store. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. C. Erin Friday, followed by Laura Palmer-Lohan, followed by Philip Abrams.
Hi, my name is C. Erin Friday, and I'm a San Carlos resident of 12 years. I am in favor of extending the moratorium for 10 months and 15 days. Obviously, Turner's is controversial. The council needs time to examine the impact of Turner's on the safety and the welfare of our community. And yes, the imminent safety of our town is at issue. I am sure that you are all acutely aware of the fact that another shooting at an elementary school happened in Northern California the morning after our last city council meeting. What parameters and zoning limitations San Carlos can require of Turner's is not a simple task. Counties, cities, and states all over the country are grappling with Wayne's Second Amendment rights against rational and reasonable zoning limitations on gun stores. As Mr. Rubens stated, California's Ninth Circuit just ruled on what rights a vendor has to sell guns in the County of Alameda. Thoughtful, comprehensive study of the impact of Turner's on our town must occur prior to them opening their doors. Otherwise, it's just too late. In closing, I and a number of my fellow local attorneys offer our legal services pro bono to the city to ensure that San Carlos gets this right. We don't want Turner's opening another gun store in our town. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Laura Palmer-Lohan, followed by Philip Abrams, followed by Jackie Yan.
Hi, I'm Laura Palmer-Lohan, mayor, council, and staff. Thank you for the opportunities to speak tonight. As a San Carlos resident, I respectfully request the extension of the moratorium on Turner's gun store opening for many of the same reasons. Time is needed to understand the impact to our community and safety thereof. It was brought up at the last meeting that there was some veiled offers of potential lawsuits to the city, and I'm in favor of the city using funds to defend itself if such lawsuits brought to bear. In my limited desk research I've done, I have also come to the conclusion that more guns is, results in more gun violence. In addition to that, I was stunned to learn that there's a model of gun available that has the ability to take down a helicopter, and Turner's gun store carries a similar model. This is especially concerning because if you think about San Carlos, one of our features is a small airport that has light aircraft and helicopters coming out of there. So these are just another aspect of things that I think that we should look at. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Philip Abrams, followed by Jackie Yan, followed by Dave Truslow.
Hello again. I'm Philip Abrams. I've been a resident here in our town for 49, almost 49 years. We are lucky enough to have our children and grandchildren living in our wonderful town. I have been a retailer, as I mentioned before, so I know the rights and the obligations and duties of retailers. I support the moratorium. I support the extension, and if necessary, I support spending city funds to back that action. Thanks so much.
Thank you for your comments. Jackie Yan, followed by Dave Truslow, followed by Susan S.
Hi, I'm Jackie Yan. Thank you for having me speak. Thank you for taking the time again to think this through. I think we need an extension. I don't even think 10 months is enough, given what you're saying, that we're not even going to have a consultant available for weeks. And there's a lot of people reaching out to me that want to get involved and not even sure how to do it. So there's a lot more people that aren't present today. But what I did want to share is the American Journal of Public Health published an article in November of 2013 that shows that increased gun ownership, which is a legal way to procure guns, is correlated with increased gun deaths at a one-to-one correlation. So the numbers speak for themselves. We have a crisis, and it's time to address it, and we are all speaking out, asking you to join us in this effort. Thank you. And we use our city funds for this. We have plenty of cash.
Thank you for your comments. Dave Truslow, followed by Susan S., followed by Michelle Sorrell.
Thank you very much. I'm Dave Truslow, and I wanted to recognize Mr. Collins. I very much appreciate his response to some questions that I raised. I'm here really to speak about process rather than outcome. And Mr. Collins was generous enough to share his input with me that evidently Turner's neglected to file appropriate permits or something along those lines. And I find that interesting and hope that when the discussion period occurs, that staff will respond to exactly what else did Turner's not do, if that is in fact the case that would justify the moratorium. Furthermore, what is the basis for not having substantiation? I couldn't find anything in the public record in the staff report that says why this represents a public safety hazard. There isn't anything from law enforcement or public safety or anything to substantiate the claim. In effect, we're saying it's a problem because it's a problem. That's a circular argument. So I'm really concerned about process more than anything else, and this process is very troubling to me. Again, I very much appreciate the council's opportunity to look at this, and I hope that you'll reach wise decisions. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Susan S., followed by Michelle Sorrell, followed by Ruth Donahue. Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you, council. My name is Susan, and I'm a business owner, a mother of two, and resident of San Carlos for the last 15 years. I've always looked at San Carlos as being family-friendly. When we look to build a home here, we looked at many other cities up and down the peninsula. I've lived in California my whole life in the Bay Area. And what we found about San Carlos is the small downtown, the family feel. You know, if you go on Laurel Street, you know you're going to see someone you know, which means that it's a special place, and then it becomes even more special by seeing the people here who have come in droves and said no to a gun store in San Carlos. I hope you listen to what you're hearing here. I hope you listen to the statistics and consider that in your decision. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. Michelle Sorrell, followed by Ruth Donahue, followed by Maeve North.
Good evening, council. My name is Michelle Sorrell. I've been a member in the San Carlos community for nine years. I have two children, and I support extending the moratorium on retail establishments selling ammunitions or firearms in San Carlos for 10 months and 15 days. I'm also in favor of the city using funds to fight any lawsuits as a result of the moratorium on retail establishments selling ammunitions or firearms in San Carlos. I want to note that a lot of cities are watching us right now, and we're getting press from the national level as well. We can make a difference. It starts with us. Please extend the moratorium. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Ruth Donahue, followed by Maeve North, followed by Lee Solan.
Hey, good evening. My name is Ruth Donahue. I've been a resident of San Carlos for 15 years, and I support extending the moratorium. I'm also in favor of the city using funds to further investigate and bear any financial burdens as a result of this moratorium. This is obviously a very sensitive issue, and it's an emotional one, but it's also an issue which many of us have given a lot of rational thought. And I ask the council to please respect the wishes of the residents of San Carlos and extend the moratorium and carefully investigate what is in the best interest of San Carlos and not of a specific business entity. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Maeve North, followed by Lee Solan, followed by Susan Tatum.
Thank you for listening to all of us again. I feel two weeks ago, hundreds of San Carlos residents came to this meeting to share our thoughts about the proposed Turner Gun Store. Many, many more watched from home. In fact, three different people have come up to me and said, oh, I heard your comments. I was watching from my living room. We are engaged in this, and we deserve the time and some processes so that our opinions, we can together make a decision that reflects our community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Lee Solan, followed by Susan Tatum, followed by Maureen Svenson.
My name is Lee Solan. My wife and I have been raising our two kids here in San Carlos for the last seven years, and I support the moratorium. I support extending the moratorium, and I support the use of city funds to fight this issue if necessary. At the last meeting, Mr. Mayor, you spoke about this being an issue of community standards, and I couldn't agree more at that meeting. And again, tonight, the community has made it very clear how we feel about this issue. This is about outside interests that want to establish a big building full of guns over the objections of the community that you were elected to serve. It's that simple. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Susan Tatum, followed by Maureen Svenson, followed by Robert Hendricks.
Hi, I'm Susan Tatum. I've lived here since 1986. I support the extension of the moratorium, and I also hope that there is an opportunity for those of us who care about not having additional gun stores in our town to be part of the evaluation and decision-making process on what limits we do decide to impose, if any. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Maureen Svenson, followed by Robert Hendricks, followed by Alan Gates. Maureen Svensson, followed by Robert Hendricks, followed by Alan Gates. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Maureen Svensson, and our family have lived in San Carlos since 2002. We are gun owners. We are the proud parents of United States Marine. My husband, who's here tonight, is trained by the NRA in gun safety, Mr. Grocott, and we are not afraid of guns. We support the moratorium. We already have one gun dealer in this town. It's perfectly adequate for the population. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Robert Hendricks, followed by Alan Gates, followed by Dennis Hessler. Hansler. Welcome.
Hello, dear members of the San Carlos Council. I've been a resident of San Carlos for eighteen years, and I urge the Council to approve alternative two, not to extend the moratorium. Firearms retailer, Emberton Smithers, has been in San Carlos for over fifty years, and San Carlos continues to be a great place to live. I love living here. It's great. The fact that Emberton Smithers or any other gun store is here has no bearing on that. Our crime rate is substantially lower than California, most of California, and the U.S. median crime rates. Claims that an additional firearms retailer will bring more crime to our community are simply not supported by fact. Actually, data shows just the opposite. Over the past few years, local pharmacies, restaurants, beauty salons, vehicle repair shops, and many, many personal vehicles have been burglarized. Furthermore, on average, forty or fifty of my local residents' fellow residence homes will be burglarized each year. Yes, Emberton Smithers is on this list, but just once, not multiple times. Every new business that comes to San Carlos shares the risk of being victimized. Our current firearms law, ordinance 450, has been in place since 1958. California Penal Code 267005 instructs local authorities how to regulate firearms retailers. This was last updated in 2011, and our San Carlos Business Registration category, which clearly lists firearm sales as a recognized business, was updated in 2014. Each time, the San Carlos City Council and local residents saw no urgent reason to react. The actual risk to San Carlos' public health and safety from firearms retailers has not increased. Ongoing pro-moratorium comments directed at the Council and the San Carlos City staff's recommendations are emotional responses devoid of specific facts supporting the moratorium. As I noted before, the experiment in San Carlos has already been done.
Your time is up, sir.
We don't have a firearms ordinance because we don't need one.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Alan Gates, followed by Dennis Hansler, followed by Marie O'Reardon.
Members of the Council, my name is Alan Gates. I am a member of this community, resident of San Carlos, and a priest and minister at the Church of the Epiphany here in San Carlos. Of course, I do come to you tonight to offer my support and encouragement that you adopt this additional extension to the moratorium. I'll use the rest of my time to address one concern that was brought up tonight, and that is the direct public safety concern. As was just mentioned, other businesses do get burglarized, like beauty shops. In San Carlos, I believe we have additional permitting required for beauty shops to open in this town, more so than we do for gun stores. In addition to that, addition to the concern for public safety, we already have a demonstrated incident of theft in our existing gun store, and Turner's Gun Store has a history of theft at their other locations. I think this in itself constitutes a clear public safety risk. That's all I'll offer my time, although just to offer my support also of the use of any city funds for the defense of any work that you do. Oh, I'll also mention that a lot of folks want to make this a Second Amendment issue. It is indeed an issue of just good zoning. The part of it that is a Second Amendment issue is that many Second Amendment proponents would tell you that the Second Amendment supports the work of the people to actually carry out the liberties that we appreciate. And the very issue at hand is taking the time to do the work of the people. So thank you to all of you that support the Second Amendment for upholding that right.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Dennis Hansler, followed by Marie O'Reardon, followed by Sandy Althouse.
Mayor, Council, my name's Dennis Hessler. I am a business owner in the city of San Carlos. I graduated from San Carlos High School in 1975. My great-grandfather was the first doctor in Redwood City. I strongly oppose any moratorium concerning Turner's. The concept or the perception that one more gun store or one less gun store in this city is going to make anyone sitting in this room or anybody that you know one little tiny bit safer is like an ostrich sticking its head in the sand. If it's not in our town, it doesn't exist. These people, Turner's has the right, as does every other business in this town, bars, 7-Elevens, liquor stores, and I believe soon to be cannabis, they have the right to be in business just like anyone else. If they go through the proper permitting process and it's accepted, then they should be allowed to do business. These people, the ones that are opposed to this, they don't want the moratorium. They want it banned, period. And they truly believe by doing that, it's going to make a difference. So I strongly oppose it. I'm a San Carlos businessman. Please.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Marie O'Reardon, followed by Sandy Althouse, followed by Ron Pio... I never get this right. Piovason, I'm going to get it right.
Hello, my name's Maria Reardon. I'm a homeowner and resident of San Carlos for twenty-five years. I did attend the November 13th City Council meeting, but I did not speak at that event. What I did see at that event is that Turner had the opportunity to speak to our city, and it alarmed me as to the level that they were unprepared to address our community's concerns and security issues. We have no idea what is the public health and the public safety costs of this store entering our community, but we do know that there will be a very steep price, and I'm not just talking about monetary terms. The citizens of San Carlos have local resources here for sourcing guns, but we don't need a business that will inflict damage and is completely unprepared to properly do business in our city. I urge you to show moral leadership and to approve this moratorium. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Sandy Althouse, Ron Piov... Piovason, and Rob Jenks.
Hi, my name's Sandy Althouse, and I've been a resident of San Carlos most of my life, and I just want to say that I hope you continue the moratorium. And also, I want to say that this one gun store might not make the difference in gun deaths, but I think San Carlos can set an example and lead other cities and other people to rise up and make a change in our gun laws. It's got to start somewhere, so it can start with the grassroots. So please continue this moratorium. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Ron Piovason, Rob Jenks, and Holly is the third speaker.
Thank you very much, and I won't make the same joke about my wife keeping her maiden name. So my name is Ron Piovason. I am a five-year resident of San Carlos, and I'd like to highlight, I think, how this all came about. To understand the depths of the community's feelings on this issue, it is good to take a step back and understand how the community became first engaged. We read from the Council that there was hundreds of emails. I would wager that an overwhelming majority of them were in favor of the moratorium. I'd also wager that most that were against the moratorium were not from San Carlos. What we saw last time was surely one of the largest community involvements on any single issue this Council has ever seen. I personally became aware of this issue when someone from this community posted about a new gun store online. That is the same person Mr. Grocott pejoratively referred to as some priest at the last meeting. When this person, who is a priest, a community leader, and a concerned San Carlos citizen, posted online, it set off a series of emails and discussions that spread immediately. Within less than a day, our inboxes were jammed with links, research, and facts. There are some claims this is all a knee-jerk reaction. Nothing could be further from the truth. There was all manner of thoughtful discussion between San Carlos citizens. I know because I witnessed them. There were individual phone calls. There were group conference calls. I saw some email chains that you have to scroll down, down, down to the very bottom to actually find the original email. So to reiterate, this is of extreme importance to the community. This is an issue that needs to be researched and well-understood. This is an issue that the community is demanding to be involved in, and it's not something that should be outsourced to some D.C. lobby group, fanatic lobby group, or some L.A. lawyer that's been sending nasty grams on behalf of a big-box gun store with a reputation of being broken into, who say that they want to be part of the community while giving oh-so-veiled threats of legal action. This is of great importance to the community, and we would like the moratorium to be extended.
Thank you. Rob Jenks, followed by Holly, followed by Hillary Weszinger.
Thank you, Council members. My name is Rob Jenks. I'm raising my two kids with my wife here in San Carlos. We've lived here for almost five years now. First off, I'd really like to thank you all for the time that you're giving to this issue and the space that you're giving us for engaging in this process, and as an earlier speaker said, doing the work of the public. I think that's great. I just wanted to say a couple of things. First of all, I'm not here because I'm afraid of guns. I'm not here because I'm emotional about this issue. I'm simply here because you and we deserve some time to figure this out, and that's all that's being asked here. So please do extend the moratorium. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Holly, followed by Hillary Weszinger, followed by Mary Ree.
Hi, thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak again. I'm back again as a San Carlos resident, and Palmdale is my hometown. If you don't remember, Turner's has just opened one there. I was also the person who had her high school friend shot by her brother's best friend because the safety was off, and they both knew about gun safety. I've been thinking a lot about the public comments two weeks ago, and both sides had to argue. One side argued facts, and the other side argued a lot of emotional and personal experience. Ultimately, decisions are a contribution of this both head and heart. It's the head that leads us to the doorway, but it's the heart that gets us to walk through. These emotions are the reason why we're here today, and these emotions are why we all voted you as our council members. So I ask that we extend the moratorium and see if what we feel is a knee-jerk reaction. Extending the moratorium will allow us to have discussion with our head, including all the laws, facts, and implications, as well as our heart, including what San Carlos residents desire on how we want to treat firearm sale in this very small, five-square-mile town. Five square miles. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Hillary Weszinger, followed by Mary Ree, followed by Kate Fluff. Welcome.
Hi, thanks for having me. My name's Hillary Weszinger. I'm a twelve-year resident in San Carlos. I'm also a teacher in San Carlos, and I have two children that go to San Carlos schools. So I just wanted to ask all of you if any of you have been in a lockdown drill? Have any of you been in a lockdown drill? So I'm more than happy to welcome you to come to my classroom and experience a lockdown drill. For children to have to... For me, I was in a high school district. Now I'm in a middle school district. To explain to children without scaring them what a lockdown drill is is really hard to do. So I challenge you to that. So I'm going to support anything that is going to keep our city safer. I'm responsible for thirty-two children. I have to keep them safe. So I'm asking you to keep us safe by extending the moratorium. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. Mary Ree, followed by Kate Fluff, followed by George Robinson.
Hi, my name is Mary Ree. The last time I addressed the City Council, I spoke from the perspective of a pediatrician, passionate about gun safety. And I also presented the local medical community's opinion about the concern for Turner's opening up in our town. Today, I speak to you as a fellow San Carlos resident for nine years. I truly believe, as many of you believe, that there is something truly unique and special about our town. I love San Carlos. I care about our neighbors, and in doing so, I fully acknowledge that there are many responsible gun owners who reside in our town to keep their guns and ammos locked and away from children. But this issue is not about taking away anyone's guns. I fully support the extension of the gun moratorium because I believe that we, as a community, deserve some time to process what's going on. And an issue so heated as this, opening up a gun store next to businesses that cater to children, I think that we, as a community, deserve time to ask questions, to study the implications on public safety, and on the implications of the small businesses located in the near vicinity of Turner's. This is why I fully support the continuation of the gun store moratorium, and I fully support the usage of city funding for this endeavor. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Kate Fluff, followed by George Robinson, followed by Bill Schupfl... Scheffler, excuse me.
Hi there, my name's Kate Fluff, and I'm a resident of San Carlos. I'm a mental health advocate, a parent, and a teacher in this community. I wrote to the Council several weeks ago, asking you to allow the gun store to open and against the moratorium, because I was very skeptical whether there was really an urgent issue that preventing the store from opening would validly address. And I was skeptical that there was very much that a local community could do that would have a meaningful impact. The short moratorium that we've had has allowed me to do exactly what an extended moratorium would do. It's allowed me to do more research, gather information. It's allowed me to have conversations with citizens who have different perspectives from mine. It's allowed more time for thoughtful, careful consideration on what is a very complicated and difficult issue. So first, to the urgency matter. As a mental health advocate, I delved into the statistics for San Mateo County in particular. I learned that two-thirds of gun deaths in this country are due to suicide, an issue I have particular concern about. I also learned that San Mateo County has the highest rate of self-injury hospitalizations compared to our neighboring counties, one of the highest rates in the country. However, only thirty percent of our suicides in the county are due to firearms. That's low compared to the national average, which is about half. And that's because California has long waiting periods that reduce the immediacy of a suicide risk and lower rates of ownership overall. Suicide by gun is fatal in eighty-five percent of cases. So that makes a big difference. If you try to overdose, it's about two percent fatality. So guns make a huge difference because ninety percent of survivors of a suicide attempt go on to get treatment and heal, and guns rob people of their chance to make a successful recovery. Their lives are valuable and worth saving. We are currently experiencing a cluster of five youth suicides in the past seven months.
I'm sorry, your time is up, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments.
Please extend the moratorium.
George Robinson, followed by Bill Scheffler, followed by Amy Kottashak. Welcome.
Thank you. My name's George Robinson. I need to say something before I start on this issue. There were comments made about Matt Grocott that are totally wrong. I've known him for a number of years. He's one of the most moral, ethical, and best people I could have ever known. He would be an asset to any political office that he wishes to ascend to. Now, on this subject, this is really a business decision. It's not a gun decision. Let's say I was a vegetarian, and I said, "Well, I don't want any business in this city to sell meat products. No stores, no restaurants." Let's say I was an alternative energy advocate, and I don't want any gas stations. I don't want PG and E to supply gas. What would we say to that? We're restricting business based on emotional feelings, and that can't be done. This business, by all... By everything you can think of, meets all the required business requirements. So you let them sell it. They're not a gun store. They're a sporting goods store that sells guns. If we want to say they can kill people, okay, then we've got to restrict truck sales because, as we saw in France, as we saw in New York City, terrorists kill people with trucks. So we restrict that. As far as the comments that were made about gun safety, they're wrong. The states that have the least gun laws, the slightest gun laws, have the highest The states that have the least gun laws, the slightest gun laws, have the highest gun safety or the least crimes committed by guns. So that's what I have to say about it.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Bill Scheppler, followed by Amy Kottashak, followed by Natasha Melly.
Hi.
Welcome.
Thank you. I'm a 20-year San Carlos homeowner, and I urge the city council to extend the moratorium on new businesses selling firearms and ammunition. The following are excerpts from recruiting.nra.org from January 2014. "The people at Turner's know what it takes to be a successful dealer recruiter. They pass the commissions to their salespeople to ensure that every customer is asked to join or renew. They provide sales incentives for their employees to keep them motivated and focused on growing NRA membership. The chain hosts special NRA weekends and provides customers with incentives such as free membership with the purchase of a firearm during select dates. 2014 promises to be another amazing year of recruitment for Turner's. Vice President of Operations Bill Ortiz plans additional employee incentives, increased customer exposure to NRA, and many other fantastic ideas to keep the flow of NRA memberships going and to try to top a phenomenal 2013 campaign. From July 2016, Turner's Outdoorsman of California set out to make 2016 its best year ever. Vice President of Compliance Bill Ortiz set the bar high in January, 10,000 members. It turns out that 10,000 members was not only obtainable, but obtainable within the first six months. Now the chain of California stores has revised its goal to 20,000. A new employee commission plan was implemented at the stores this year, and it's made incredible impact. Turner shares $5 of the commission with the employee who sells the membership, no matter what. If the store hits its monthly goal set by management, each employee earns an extra dollar for every membership sold that month." I'm going to skip down because I'm moving. Dealers across the country are trying new techniques to bring members into NRA. Vance Outdoors implemented a new incentive program for their employees to encourage them to recruit new members. They got the idea after meeting Bill Ortiz of Turner's Outdoorsman at a recent industry event. So this company, that's a sporting goods store that happens to sell guns, has a hell of a lot of influence over NRA--
Your time is up, sir. Thank you for your comments. Amy Kottashak, followed by Natasha Melly, followed by Marie Inez-Wutsum.
Hi. It's Amy Kottashak.
Sorry.
Like cross the tracks.
I'll get it right.
I was here a couple of weeks ago with something prepared. I didn't come so prepared tonight. I think the five of you up there kind of already have in your minds what you want to do tonight. I just wanted to thank you for letting everybody share their thoughts, what they've learned, what they've researched. I want to thank you for reading all of our emails, listening to our phone calls, listening to us, and many of you have written back, and that really means a lot. My husband and I have been here, residents, for almost 14 years. We have two daughters, and we would love it if you would extend the moratorium. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Natasha Melly, followed by Marie Inez-Wutsum, followed by Joseph Stampleman.
Good evening. Thank you for listening to all of our comments. My name is Natasha Melly, and I'm a San Carlos resident. I would like to ask the council to extend the gun store moratorium for 10 months and 15 days, as I think more time is needed to create thoughtful, common-sense gun retailer policy for our community. I'm in favor of using city funds to fight any lawsuits brought upon this moratorium. In closing, I'd like to, I understand that people kill people, but I think guns make it all too easy to make that death count very high. And I think also that guns' sole purpose is for death, unlike eating meat or driving cars. And I'd also like to say that I think so many people have come out in support of this moratorium and taken this issue on, because we feel so paralyzed at the federal level that the NRA controls so much of our politics at the federal level, that we have to do something locally. We really don't have a choice if we feel passionate about this issue. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Marie Inez-Wutsum, followed by Joseph Stampleman, followed by Conan Low.
Hello. My name is Maddie Inez-Wutsum. I'm an eight-year resident of San Carlos with two young daughters attending our public schools. I spoke at the last city council meeting in favor of the moratorium. I'm here to request that you support extending the moratorium on Turner's or any new retail establishment selling ammunition or firearms in San Carlos for the 10-month and 15-days. This is an important issue that we need to get right. With the holidays approaching, this extension is necessary in order to fully study the issue. Also, I'm in favor of the city using funds to fight any lawsuits as a result of the moratorium. I want to live in this city, which I've grown to love, with my two young children, without the addition of gun stores. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Joseph Stampleman, followed by Conan Low, followed by Glenn Jellino.
Hi. My name is Joe Stampleman. I'm a 17-year homeowner and business owner. I support the extension and the use of funds. I'd give a donation if there was a place to give it to. Please don't worry about accusations of stalling or improper process. Don't be distracted by false equivalences. The NRA has created the culture of fear and distraction that pressures officials to allow guns to creep ever more places that we don't want them, or that a lot of people don't want them. That pressure understandably might have contributed to the original sin in this issue by declining to impose restrictions proactively. You, on our city council, understandably wouldn't have wanted to invite the attention of the NRA. The NRA's influence is why the government isn't allowed to even collect the holistic statistics that might bring clarity to some of the issues that people have brought up. Please don't compound the original mistake. Please take the example of the NRA. Take the long view, even in the face of inconvenient facts. Yes, somehow Turner was allowed to start their project. Maybe it was an accident. Maybe they saw the opportunity. But let's stick to our principles and make sure we take the time to wade through the legal monstrosities that the NRA and its supporters have created that do not reflect the preferences of most Americans, and that's now been dumped in our lap.
Thank you for your comments. Conan Low, followed by Glenn Jellino, followed by Neelu Jenks.
Good evening. I'm a San Carlos resident for 11 years. At the last city council meeting on November 13th, Rob Zuback from Turner Outdoorsman claimed that, "Once they open their doors, he predicted, 'You'll forget that we're even there. We won't do anything negative to the community.'" Well, this weekend, as I was driving home from Monterey with my kids along Highway 1, I saw this billboard advertising $60 off a Remington Model 870 Express tactical shotgun that the manufacturer recommends for military, law enforcement, and home defense. This does not seem like a company that is focused on being a resource for outdoorsmen, and this is not the type of product that we want advertised on billboards in our community. Please vote to extend the moratorium.
Thank you for your comments. Glenn Jellino, followed by Neelu Jenks, followed by Van Biggins.
Good evening, council. I'd like to start off by saying how disappointed I was at the last meeting when council members that came to hear public comment on an issue came with a pre-written speech. I won't mention anybody by name, but I think you all know who that is, and I think you should be coming here with an open mind when you listen to the public, not with a preconceived decision. I just want to say, you know, since this whole issue came up, I just wanted to demonstrate the frivolity of your moratorium. So I think I'm going to give myself an early Christmas present this year. I'm going to go online, and I'm going to order a gun from Turner's, and I'm going to take possession of it and bring it right back here to a home in San Carlos. I hope my fellow neighbors feel safe, especially those that just moved here in the last 20 years or so and found it totally acceptable when we got a gun store in El Camino with a big sign that sells guns that they now suddenly find some objection to. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Neelu Jenks, followed by Van Biggins, followed by Lillian Swick, or Strick, I'm sorry. Hi.
Hi. My name's Neelu, and I've lived here for four and a half years. I'm a San Carlos resident. When I was 16, I lived in a small town of 12,000 people. You can imagine that we knew each other very well. My junior year, a 14-year-old freshman, Gregory, decided to take his friend to his dad's study to show him his dad's gun. In doing so, he accidentally shot and killed his two-year-old brother. Two minutes is not enough time for me to tell you the impact on our community. But let me sum it up by saying that you do not want that to happen here. You will wish that you did all you could to prevent that kind of tragedy, and that's why I'm here tonight. I apologize that I have an emotional reasons for being here, but I assure you that I have rational ones as well. San Carlos needs better firearms regulation. We need time to look into what regulations can be put in place to increase the safety of our city. Unfortunately, that needs to be done before Turner's opens, and I'm okay with city funds being used to give us that time if needed. I ask you to please extend the moratorium. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Van Biggins, followed by Lillian Swick, I'm not sure, sorry, followed by Joanne Sorrell.
Good evening. My name is Van Diggins. I live in San Carlos with my husband, preschooler, and kindergartner in the San Carlos School District, and I'm here in support of the moratorium. My father was a teenager drafted into the Army. He shot at other teenagers behind enemy lines. He's been shot at by enemy fire. He survived, but he carries the war with him everywhere. The sound of a balloon popping, a car backfiring, a door slamming, or a baby crying suddenly sends him swearing and running for cover. Growing up, my siblings and I tiptoed around his fallen ghosts. We watched TV standing up close in front of it because the volume had to be kept so low. We never shouted or ran around at parents as children do. The consequences of living among guns, shooting them, and being shot at changed my father's mental mapping of the world. By extension, it created my mental mapping of the world, one that is more watchful and anxious than my peers. No one or their children comes out of a gun incident feeling more whole or enlightened. I'm here in support of a healthy community. I'm here in support of happy preschoolers and kindergartners, and a generation of people who never have to live with ghosts and the consequences of gun violence. Please extend the moratorium and use city funds to defend our healthy community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Lillian Swick, I'm sorry, can't, and thank you, followed by Joanne Sorrell, followed by Pamela Holt.
Hello. My name is Lillian Speck, and first of all, I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm here as a concerned neighbor. My family and I live in the eastern half of Belmont. We live closer to the Turner, proposed Turner's location than many San Carlos addresses. You know, these aren't isolated towns. My family shops at REI, Home Depot, Roadrunner Sports, Best Buy, and eats at Chipotle, et cetera, as do many other people from Belmont, Redwood Shores, Redwood City, San Mateo. That's why that's a successful shopping center. The entire mid-peninsula area is affected by your city council decision. Many of us believe that there's already plenty of access to gun stores in this mid-peninsula area. We don't need a Turner superstore in San Carlos to become a destination for gun buyers for the entire greater Bay Area. And as the first store in this area, it would become that. I'm here tonight speaking for your neighbors. I also have a stack of about 30 postcards for each of you that are from some San Carlos, but also people from all over this area who are concerned about this issue. We want to thank you for the 45-day moratorium vote and we're asking you to extend it up to the year. And we just really want you to make a wise decision on this zoning and land use issue, not just for San Carlos, but for this whole area. And I am so impressed by--
Your time is up. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Thank you for your comments. Joanne Sorrell, followed by Pamela Holt, followed by Devora Kathari. Kathari, welcome.
Hello. I'm Joanne Sorrell. I've lived in San Carlos for 32 years. I have been a broker-realtor for 20 years. We are not here because it is a business decision. I am in favor of the moratorium. I'm upset because the NRA seems to have emotional feelings about this situation. The NRA used to be a good organization, but since it wants absolutely no gun restrictions on safety of any kind, we're against the NRA. Okay. Since I've been here so long, we have always had a good living. We've had, we try to live by the good living, San Carlos good living. We went through surveys. We've spent much money on surveys, 2007, what businesses would support good living. There was never a gun store mentioned. Anything that's come up in opposition to that has always been before the public. I am saying that, number one, as a realtor, as a broker, this is going to affect the desirability of San Carlos. This will cost San Carlos more money than any money we are spending on fighting Turner's. I believe that Turner's intentionally did not file for permits, and I believe that in that way, they thought they could run this underneath our net, because we always have decided as a city, who is going to be in San Carlos? Who is going to promote good living? And if this is also not a Second Amendment right, the decision of the Ninth Amendment does not protect gun stores as just determined by the Ninth District Court. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Your time is up. Thank you for your comments. Pamela Holt, followed by Devora Kathari.
Hi. Good evening. Thank you for letting me talk on Pamela Holt. I've been a San Carlos resident for 37 years, and I'd like to say first that I totally support the extension of the moratorium, and I would be glad to contribute any funds that might be needed. I am also interested, another gentleman brought up about process, and I'd really like to know how we got here, how we got to this place where, you know, this very controversial issue sort of was happening, and nobody seemed to know about it. And I think that during the moratorium, this is something to be really explored, and I really thank the council for, you know, taking this on, because it isn't necessarily an easy issue. But somehow, things kind of slipped through the cracks, and I'd really like to know how that happened and how we can prevent it from happening again. And I'd also like to say, I don't really, you know, Turner's Outdoorsman moving in here is not really a business issue. We have a national crisis on our hands with guns in our country, a national crisis. And the city of San Carlos is now our little city, this little microcosm here, is really representing the issue that's going on in the macrocosm, and how we handle it, and that's why people are watching us. And it is our decision. Our decision is residents of San Carlos, not NRA people, not other people, not an emotional issue from NRA people, but our decision as residents. So I'd like to thank you all, and I totally support the extension. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for your comments. Deborah Kathari.
I'm Devora Kathari, and I am very proud to be a resident of San Carlos, and I just completed the Citizens Academy, because I am happy to be more involved in the city and learn all I can and be an active member, and really try to preserve this wonderful, family-centered city. I want to add my voice to encourage all of you to extend the moratorium, and I would love to participate in any way I can, should we decide not to adopt Turner's, to really help make San Carlos a model city for saying no to gun stores and sensible gun legislation. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I have no more speaker slips. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Anyone else? Yes, sir. Please come up. Maybe you could fill a form out later if you would, after you speak. Thank you. Hand it to the city clerks.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I have been a resident of San Carlos since last January. My family's lived here for 50 years. I have strong ties to police and law enforcement all over the Bay Area, throughout all of my family members, to include my great-grandfather. I have been around guns my entire life. I've been shooting them since I was two years old. I knew wherever a gun in our house was, none of them were locked, and they were always kept loaded. I have never shown any of my friends. I have never shot anybody. Why? Because my parents instructed me not to. Safety is through education. Kids will be safer if you educate them about firearms, if you familiarize them with firearms. It takes away the mystique of the said firearm. They will be safer. The country-- The country of Switzerland has a gun statistic so low that they don't even keep a statistic for it. Every citizen ages 18 to 35 is required to maintain a fully automatic assault weapon in their home because they do not have an army, a standing army. So every citizen 18, 35, has one in their home. They don't have gun crime. We don't have a gun problem. We have a people problem. People have lost their respect for one another. It's quite simple that one more gun store, even two more gun stores, isn't going to result in any more gun crimes. There's been only a handful of gun stores ever robbed at gunpoint. I know of two. One back east, which resulted in the death of one of the attempted robbers, and another in Vancouver, Washington, where my father lives and is an active member in that gun store as well. Thankfully, this did not happen on the day we were there. I had been there many times. That incident resulted also in the deaths of the attempted robbers. I have never been in a gun store where anybody was unarmed in said gun store, so to make the claim that, oh, yes, well, you know, somebody could steal the guns, well, somebody could stab you with a ballpoint pen, too. It's not going to make you any safer. In fact, for the people who think-- I'm out of time.
Sorry. Thank you for your comments. Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, please come up and fill out a form later, please. Thank you.
Hi, thank you very much. My name is Edo Soto. I've been a resident of San Carlos for 15 years. I have three kids in San Carlos. I have both built my home, literally and figuratively, in San Carlos because I really believe in this town. I'm also a landlord. I've listened to-- I went to the last meeting. I've gotten a lot of emails, I'm sure you can relate to that, about the issue. I've looked at the research. What seems clear to me is that we still have a lot of work to do, and I think we all want to get it right. We want to get it right, not only for our community, but for the businesses that make up this town of San Carlos and that we all love, have come to love as well. And so I think we should take the time to make sure we are getting it right, that we are doing our diligence, and I'm in favor of the moratorium and using those resources that we have at our disposal to get it right. I think we owe it to everyone here. So thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Okay, last chance. Anybody else? Okay. No problem. If you'd fill out a form afterwards, sir, I'd appreciate it. If you'd fill out a speaker form afterwards, I'd appreciate it.
Hi, my name's Robert, and I've been a San Carlos resident for over 20 years. Retired law enforcement, 32 years of law enforcement. I have guns. I own guns. I own rifles. They're in a safe. I'm not a fan of having another gun store in this town.
All right, thank you for your comments. All right, anybody else? Going, going, gone. Okay, that's a public hearing, so I need a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to close the public hearing.
A second. All right, moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
And there goes Lee.
Yes. All right, now, we're going to speak up here. Comments, questions, among ourselves, and then we'll make a decision, just to let you know, in case I forgot to mention that was the last part of the items. All of you, or most of you were here last time. I'm sure you know about it, but some have not. Thank you again, all of you, for your comments, and I applaud you, I seriously applaud all sides for being respectful and listening to the other side or whatever, even if you didn't agree with it. Thank you very much for that. It shows, again, the strength of our community. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, just through the chair, do we need a motion before we have discussion?
Yeah, that would be a good idea, probably.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number--
1528.
1528, an ordinance of the city council of the city of San Carlos extending urgency ordinance number 1526 pursuant to government code section 6585A imposing a moratorium on retail establishments selling ammunition or firearms as defined in municipal code section 9.24.010 in the city of San Carlos for 10 months and 15 days.
A second.
Second.
All right, seconded. All right, discussion, comments. Mr. Johnson?
I'll be brief. I spoke at length the other night. I just want to say, again, I'm impressed by the eloquence of our community, everyone coming out and speaking tonight. As I said the other night, I think our job, my job, is to listen to the community and do my best to represent your views. I have heard from people who say that Turner's is just like any other store and that we don't need any additional restrictions on gun stores in San Carlos. I can respect people who have that point of view, but I don't share it. I side with many who spoke tonight who think there's an epidemic of gun violence in the United States and that we want to explore stricter restrictions on gun vi-- on firearm sales in San Carlos, and we need extra time to do that as a community. I'll just say, you know, for me, one speaker kind of touched me, you know, talking about, have you ever been part of a lockdown drill? And I have not, but I took my daughter to tour our preschool up at Britton Acres, you know, and I'm holding the hand of my four-year-old daughter and touring the preschool, and the teacher says, you know, well, we do lockdown drills, and she starts to explain what that is, you know, and immediately, as a father, you're holding the hand of your daughter, and you think, God, the image that comes into your mind is, I'm going to be at work, you know, and there's a, you know, someone on campus with a gun. My daughter is hiding underneath the table. And it just literally turned my stomach. I just, I couldn't handle it. And, you know, you start to rationalize and you say, well, it's not going to happen here. It could never happen here, not in our community. But you see so many examples of it all across the country. This is an emotional issue. There is no way to not be touched by what you see in the news all the time. And I really appreciate the way that we've taken an incredibly emotional issue, a potentially divisive issue, and we've come out and expressed ourselves in an incredibly civil and respectful way. So I'm going to be supporting the extension of the moratorium, and I appreciate everyone participating.
Thank you. Mr. Olbert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll echo Cameron's comments that, for everybody on both sides, all sides of this issue, I'm very impressed once again with how well San Carlos does. I guess I probably shouldn't be impressed because that's part of what makes San Carlos what it is. And I want to specifically say that it's not just the thoughtful comments that I hear. I've said to various people after the last meeting, and I feel the same way tonight. One of the things that really impressed me was that speakers were playing off of each other. And I don't mean that in a critical way or a negative way. It's just that somebody would say something, and somebody else would have a counterargument. Somebody would say something, somebody else would have a counterargument. Having done many presentations in the course of my business career, standing up in front of people, one of the hardest things to do is to be able to adjust stuff on the fly. And that's a testament to how bright and talented this community is. And I'm, my hat's off to all of you folks. I'm not going to, you'll all be relieved to find out that I don't have a prepared speech tonight because I pretty much said what I needed to last time. And it took the time to prepare some comments last time just because I wanted to get them right, because this is very important. And just like that, I want us to get this right going forward, whatever it is that we come up with. And so I'll definitely be supporting the moratorium. I hope it's not a surprise to anybody. We have a problem in this country, okay? We have a problem with gun violence. And I don't know, I'll tell you as a local official, you know, I know enough to know that I'm limited in terms of what I can do at that level. And I don't know what we can do, but I know that we owe it to ourselves and to our children to do what we can to make this place safer. There is, Cameron talked about his personal connection to imagining what would happen if it was his daughter. I try very hard not to ever think about Newtown because I cannot imagine how horrible that was. We owe it to ourselves, we owe it to our children to do better. Let's start here and try and do better. Let's take the time to do it right. And so let's extend the moratorium. Thank you.
Mr. Collins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm looking fondly back on that trip to Hawaii because we left for Hawaii on the 11th of October, and we got home on the 18th, and on the 19th, my cellphone blew up. This subject was not on my mind for seven glorious days in Hawaii. But, but a number of things have been said. I've been getting a lot of follow-up emails, and the tenor of a lot of them from people who want the store to open has been that because Turner followed all the rules, they should be allowed to open, and somehow, we stood in the way of them because they, quote, "followed all the rules." Well, somebody asked, you know, how did we get here? We got here because they didn't follow the rules. It's that simple. When I got home, my wife called me at work and said, she got a text from a mutual friend of ours who was very concerned about the store opening up. And so I immediately called the city manager and I said, what's the, you know, what's the deal? And he said, well, it's a permitted use. The key word is permitted. It's a permitted use. So I, so I told her, I said, well, tell our friend that, you know, there's not, it's not a heck of a lot we can do about it if it's a permitted use. What I was immediately thinking was, this is a business that got their permits, and they're, we're opening their store. And had they done that, none of us would be sitting here right now. They'd be well on their way to opening. Be nothing we could do about it. But they chose to sign a 10-year lease. Then they chose to do some demolition in a storefront that they had leased before they applied for their permit. That's why we're here. So to me, I think they got, you know, the cart before the horse. So I really reject the idea that it's the city standing in the way of an enterprise coming into the city. And quite frankly, had they followed all the rules, I honestly probably wouldn't have thought much about it. What changed my mind was the community outcry and the emotion from the community. That does have an effect, and this is one of the reasons I got on the council, because I love direct democracy, and this is the greatest example of it. But what we're doing in this country isn't working. That's what I tell everybody who says, we just leave everything alone. Every time you see something on TV after a mass shooting, they say, now is not the time. Now is not the time. If you ever watched John Oliver Show, he put a montage of that together of about 15 people saying on various news organizations, now is not the time. Well, you know what? Now is the time because people are dead. A lot of people are dying. That way isn't working anymore. So if getting it right in this town is, results in maybe a one-year extension or a two-year extension, I'm all for it because all I want to do is for this town to get it right. So I will be supporting it once again.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Grocott?
So thinking about the emergency aspect, as it's put, emergency ordinance, I took some time to go back and look at what we've done as a council with regards to guns, ammunition, gun safety, and so forth. I had mentioned last time that I had a memory, and the city manager backed me up on it, that I had recalled a couple of times where council members had brought up the issue about guns and should we have a discussion and so forth. But I couldn't remember the exact times that it happened, so I did some research over the weekend, and I'm going to run through these for you as quickly as I can. I don't want to take too much time, but December 14 of 2015, council member Olbert informed the city that he was following an ordinance passed a year ago at that time by the city of Sunnyvale that imposed additional controls on high-capacity ammunition magazines. He said it was wending its way through the courts. Apparently, it had been challenged in court, and that the United States Supreme Court had just considered a similar case. And then Mark was informing the council that he had asked city staff to provide him with a briefing on the cases, adding, not that I think this is a particular risk in San Carlos, but I'm sure the people in Sandy Hook felt the same way. He said the rest of the council would be welcome to the briefing when it became available if anyone, if any of the other council members would like to see it. Myself, I don't know if it was ever prepared, what happened to that, if Greg prepared something for Mark or not, but... So that was at the end of the year in 2015. In early 2016, on February 8, Mr. Collins reported to the council that he, along with Charles Stone from Belmont, went up to a meeting in San Francisco that they had been invited to by Gavin Newsom, and it was to discuss a gun violence prevention initiative known as Safety for All Act. And then on September 12, 2016, again, council member Olbert brought up a subject he said was very near and dear to his heart. He wanted the council to consider an endorsement of state Proposition 63, which, if you remember, Prop 63 limited magazine capacity and requires background checks if you're going to purchase ammunition, and that did pass that measure. But he, Mr. Olbert, was looking for council to endorse Prop 63. And so we had a discussion on that, and we decided not to, not to endorse it. He only got, he only got support from Mr. Collins. Probably the most important one was, again, Mr. Olbert on October 9, 2017. So this is after Turner's has turned in their drawings to the city of San Carlos to get a building permit, to build out their store. Councilmember Olbert wanted, quote, and I'm quoting here, "to see if we want to agendize something, given the very horrific event that occurred in Las Vegas the other week. California has some very robust gun control laws, and we recently improved them as a state." He's referring to Prop 63, which passed. Personally, as a member of the council, I wouldn't mind having a staff presentation and discussion with Rubens and Rothaus. Rothaus is our, we call him our chief, he's really captain in the Sheriff's Department, but he's our chief of police, so to speak. With Rubens and Rothaus leading the charge about whether or not there are some things we could reasonably do locally that might help improve the situation as it relates to mass gun violence. Not that I have three items I want us to act on, but I'd at least like our experts to come in and talk to us about what might be possible so we can at least have a discussion. And again, he did not get support. It takes three council members to put something on the agenda, and again, I believe it was only Mr. Collins that supported that idea. So in my mind, to say that we need the time to examine the impact to our community and the safety of our community, we've had the time. It's been brought up many, many times, and there wasn't the political will on the council to take up the issue and discuss it. We could have, on October 9, we could have taken this up, discussed it, and come up with, you know, well, maybe we limit any more gun stores, or, you know, we don't have very strong ordinances when it comes to the retail of guns and ammunition. And that could have been a recommendation by the, either the chief or Mr. Rubens, had we had that meeting. That actually would have happened if we had taken that up on October 9 and agreed to put it on the agenda. It would have been on the agenda when the priest came with some of his, I assume it's some of his parishioners, to ask us to... Is there something wrong with what I said? To, to, it would have been that same, same council meeting that we would have been discussing some kind of local measure to, you know, address gun violence and so forth. We didn't do it. We chose not to. So I don't see that there's this emergency. Now, people have asked about what did Turner's do? How did they get to where, you know, where they arrived? Well, it's a legal retail business in San Carlos. And I understand people have an issue with that, and they want to talk about that, and I think that's fine to talk about it. I don't think it's fine to hurt Turner's because I contacted, actually, the architect. She's actually an interior, certified interior designer with State of California. Her name is Catherine Schneider, and she made her second trip to San Carlos on September 7 to submit plans to the city to have plan check done. Mark Zuger, who works in our building department, took in three sets of plans, and then a few days later, Catherine was requested to submit another set of plans specifically for the planning department, and that was done. And those plans were submitted to the planning department, and they're date-stamped September After submitting the plans, Ms. Schneider called three times to the building department regarding their progress because a TI really shouldn't take all that long to get approved.
Tenant improvements.
Tenant improvements, thank you, bud. The first and second times, no information was given other than to say things were in progress or in process. progress, or in process. A month after submittal in early October, Ms. Schneider spoke with Chris Valley, who is our chief building official, and he apologized for any delay, explaining that the department was backlogged, which I can understand that it is, because I am in the business, and a lot of things are backlogged. But soon after speaking to Chris, Catherine did receive an email from him confirming the plans were being sent to an outside plan check service. So the city's had them for nearly a month, and they're only just then going out to plan check, to an outside service. On October 17, Ms. Schneider received an email with plan check corrections from Building and Fire. On October 25, following our October 23 meeting, Chris Valley called to inform Catherine about the council meeting that had taken place, where it was decided to put an item on the next meeting's agenda almost three weeks hence, in November, to consider a moratorium on any new gun stores in the city. Catherine informed Chris that she had the corrected plans ready to submit. He stated he'd been given direction not to process them, and that the project was on hold until the city council decided whether or not to go forward with a moratorium on any new gun stores in San Carlos. Despite the city's position, Ms. Schneider submitted the plans, the revised plans, anyway, that same day, October 25. Now, I don't think that's due process myself, because when we made a decision on October 23, it was merely, it wasn't an action item. The folks that came, came under public comment. We responded to the public comment by agreeing to put something on the agenda for October 23. That's not taking action by the council. That's consensus, to put something for discussion and possible action on the next council meeting. And yet, the city didn't process Turner's plans. I don't think that's right. They should have processed them, in my opinion. And if Turner's wanted to take the risk of going forward with construction and everything, and then being told, sorry, we're putting a moratorium in place, you can't sell guns, that would be their risk to take, wouldn't it? But they weren't given that opportunity. They could, they could have decided, you know what? We're going to open our store. We have a lot of product that we sell for hunting and fishing that doesn't include guns, so we can operate for a year, or whatever time it takes to get through the moratorium. And if the city wants to put further restrictions, we'll see what we can do, you know, we're at risk on that. And we'll comply if it's, if it's a zoning issue, we have to move our store, we're at risk for that, too. But that should have been put on them, in my opinion. Because, again, council had not taken any action. We had just agreed to have a discussion and possibly take action, which, of course, we did. I don't think any of that was fair to Turner's. I think we all need to step back a moment and put ourselves in the shoes of this retailer. Forget about the gun issue. A lot of you said it's not a Second Amendment issue, and it really isn't. It's an issue of telling a business that's legal, all of a sudden, that's this close to getting their building permit, sorry, you can't do business in our town until we figure this thing out, which we've been talking about, you know, there was the opportunity, my point on the earlier part was, all along, there was opportunity to organize, do what you guys have done. There's nothing wrong with what you did, but as far as organizing and coming and speaking to the council, but that could have been done. Someone could have gone up to Mr. Olbert after the December 14 meeting and say, I really like what you said. Can we, is there something we can do? Each went it four times, and nothing was done. So to me, it's just simply not fair. And I don't want us to do something that's unfair to Turner's or any business that wants to come into San Carlos. So that's my position.
All right. Thank you for your comments. As I said last time, I still believe, and as was mentioned by one of the speakers, it's an issue of community standards. Councils make decisions or don't make decisions. Councils, the next council changes that decision, the next council changes that decision. The nature of the beast. I think we, you mentioned about taking a breath. I think we do need, as I said last time, to take a breath. We want to explore what we have in our books for laws and other things inside them. And I would hope that it doesn't take 10 months, to be quite honest. I think we can get it done in a lot quicker time and have, as mentioned, folks who are interested in public input, all the items that we're going to talk about are going to have public input. We'll have meetings, as many as we need to have, to have folks put their input in. Staff report comes out, but we still have input after that. So, anyway, so call the question.
If I may, since I was cited a lot in Matt's rather lengthy comments, could I make a brief comment about that?
I'd rather you didn't, but, all right, go ahead. I'll give you a minute.
Okay, I better talk fast. Here's an alternative explanation of what Matt described as the track record of how we, you know, Turner might have assumed that it was okay to open the store here. Since it revolved a lot around me, I feel comfortable saying this. And it's something I want you all to remember when I run for reelection in 2020. Apparently, I am an incompetent boob when it comes to convincing my colleagues to take up a topic. However, however, when you speak up, they listen. Thank you.
All right. Call the question. Folks, folks, let's keep it, let's keep it straight here.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
No.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
And Mayor Gosili.
Yes. All right. We'll take about a five minutes, five minutes, and we'll go from there. Thank you, folks.
Have concluded the best allowable activities for the city of San Carlos will be cultivation. As far as nurseries only in a location up to 10,000 square feet. Manufacturing, testing, distribution, and micro-business without any retail component. To your right, you will see the areas within or the land uses within the city that they are allowed. This here is a complete fee schedule that we are presenting before you tonight. Essentially, a couple of key phases of it. The first phase is the application fees. Zoning clearance or minor use permits will be required for these businesses to operate. And these are the actual costs associated with them to your right. The application fees themselves have been broken up into a two-step process with the initial fee being an actual cost of $3,500 deposit. As far as the two-phase applicant or the second phase of the application, it's a $10,500 deposit is the actual cost. The renewal application fees at every year, the city will carefully review these businesses to ensure that they are still in line with all the health and safety regulations that we've approved. And the actual cost for that is a $3,000 deposit, excuse me, $3,000 deposit and then the actual cost as well. For annual monitoring and compliance fees, as you can see on the side, they will range anywhere from $4,500 in testing up to $21,500 for manufacturing. A couple of things to keep in mind here is that some of these numbers might jump out at you, but what we've done is we've carefully crafted the amount of hours and departments that will be involved with these processes, as well as taking your hourly, hourly burdened rates that the city has in place now. And we've come up with different tasks, have worked with the city to develop what departments will take charge of these, and these essentially are what the rates come out to. The city of San Carlos ordinance 1525 is adopted on November 13th, and those are the health and safety regulations that were used to come up with these hourly rates and tasks. The fees are before you tonight, and if approved, the city can then start processing applications as soon as December 15th. And the state will begin is scheduled to begin issuing permits on January 1st. At this time, staff does recommend that the city council adopt the red resolution establishing the commercial cannabis business permit fee program. Things to keep in mind is that these deposits, these permits will include a deposit. Any excess cost, actual cost to the city that are over the deposit will be invoiced to these businesses. If for any reason they are under, they will be returned. Their, the point is to essentially cost full cost recovery to the city for the monitoring and compliance of these businesses. Cities may consider cannabis tax in the future, and that would result in additional tax revenues. Any questions?
Mr. Olbert.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Good presentation. It was very succinct. I think we've all got an email today, I know I did, from a resident or business person who is concerned about the level of costs associated with some of these steps. And I thought you were, you were very clear to point out here that, as I believe is recorded by law, we only get to charge actual costs. I mean, there may be a deposit, but the point is it's actual costs.
They will be actual costs, correct?
So, to perhaps relieve that person's concerns, I mean, actual costs, is there like a time management system that the city uses so that when my application comes in, it keeps track of how many hours are being spent by different people? And when Ron's comes in, if his is more complicated, he gets charged with a different amount? But that's how it works?
So, the rates themselves, the hours determined are our past examples, and then just looking at what other cities have done, is how many hours it's going to take for each task. So, you see the large, let me go back to a little bit the number. I guess, you know, what's, what's not behind that is the detail that goes behind it and kind of a spreadsheet that we've used to work with the city staff to determine how many of hours it'll take their staff, let's say, one hour to review this plan, two hours for this. We, you know, have obviously looked at other city costs as well. City of San Jose, for example, there, I mean, any of those fees that you see from $4,500 to $21,000, they charge $131,000 for that per year. There's other cities around, you know, the Bay Area that are also charging ballpark, I think what these are.
And it's, let me just follow up quickly in the interest of time. It sounds, it sounds to me like perhaps I was a little bit mistaken about time, you know, keeping track of hours. It almost sounds more like a standard pricing model, almost, it reminds me a little bit of when I go to get my car worked on, they tell me it's going to cost a certain amount, and I know they don't actually keep track of how many minutes the mechanic is working on it, it's just that's what their study has shown, that for them, that's what they're going to charge. So, we have something like that, it sounds like. Okay, fine. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Grokot.
Two, two questions. One, staying on the fee schedule aspect. I'm a little confused why we would do a deposit, and then you're saying we would keep track of the hours, is that right? And then if it's under, they would get some of that back? If it's over, we would charge?
The actual cost incurred, correct. So, depending on, you know, how routinely these businesses would have to have a fire or a police, you know, chief or sheriff go in and inspect, if he would have a consultant go in and inspect, you know, the walkthroughs, the paperwork, the revisions, all of that themselves.
This is after they're, I'm sorry, this is after they're already up and running?
The bottom annual monitoring and compliance fees, yes. Not the application fees, that would be for the application process.
Okay, so for the application fees, is that a deposit, and then we keep track of the time and so forth?
Correct, and the cost and what department. It's based off of a person but or task, task and department is how the hourly rates would be calculated.
So, I'm a little confused why we can do that when, because when we were looking at, and this is not, you know, in your wheelhouse, but when we were looking at fees for residential construction and remodels and additions and that sort of thing, I was asking staff to go that route, and I was told, well, it takes too much time, it's too much administrative, so we just do the average and we just charge the average. And here you're telling us that we can actually keep track of the time and so forth.
And I would respectfully defer to the city for that. I would let you know that that's something that SCI has formulated and put together for cannabis clans, and we bring that spreadsheet into the cities and work with them to develop those hours.
Al, do you have any comment on that?
One of the unique things about this is in talking to the consultants and learning about this is that these, this process is a lot different, for instance, than a single-family residential house. And there's many, many more steps in review processes that we have to go through regarding like state compliance and other things like this. Also, this is a new system for us, and, and it's much more involved than anything that I think we've seen before in terms of like a regular use permit because of the industry itself. There's just so many new things. And so, right now, that, this is what we're seeing in the industry, this is what we're seeing in other cities who have gone through like medical marijuana dispensaries and other, you know, uses in their communities. So, it's a much more involved review process.
So, is, is there, I guess we could, I could discuss this with our council members, but I'd like to get from you. It seems like to me there ought to be a consistency. We either treat this just like we treat, you know, any other permitting process where you pay a base fee, and then if it, you know, if things aren't done the, the first time correctly, and you have to come back and resubmit too many times, then you're going to get hit with a, with an overage, right? A charge. That's what we do with everything else. I don't see why we don't do that with this unless we want to take everything else and make it like this, which is actually what I would love to see. Because I don't think, you know, fees are supposed to be based on work and what's actually done, not just guesswork.
Well, I think as noted by Sonia, you know, in the event that it's a much more complicated situation, there's a possibility that we could go over. And we think it's fair if, hey, if we don't spend the, you know, amount of time on your particular project, you're perfect the first time you go through, you don't need a bunch of extra reviews, you know how it is with plan checks, sometimes you gotta go through a couple of different ones, then we'll refund your money. A similar type of process that we do have in San Carlos is for larger, more complex, or we call them key development projects, like, you know, maybe a hotel or something requires a planning development permit. We do do this, a similar model in that we take in a big fee. We say, okay, we estimate that it's going to cost $25,000. Give us a check for that. Same thing, if we don't spend it, we'll give it back. If we do, we go over.
Okay. And the second question I have, which could be for either one of you, when we went through this before and approved some things, did we have this bullet list of that we were approving cultivation, manufacturing, testing, distribution, micro-business without retail component?
Yes.
We did. Can somebody explain to me what micro-business without retail component really means? What is that?
I have Sonia.
Okay.
At the state level, if you have, if you want to run a cultivation, if you would like to receive a cultivation permit, it's almost like you're applying for that one permit. And then if you want a manufacturer's permit, you also apply for that one in testing and so forth. A micro-business essentially combines those, kind of like an umbrella permit that allows you to conduct all of those activities. At the state level, it'll also include, a micro-business license will also include a retail dispensary component. However, since the city of San Carlos has chosen to not allow dispensaries, a micro-business licensee can operate here, however, they could not operate their retail aspect of their business here in San Carlos.
But then with the distribution part of it, they could distribute to some other retail outlet someplace else in the state, is that correct?
Correct, right, yeah.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Collins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't know if this is for Sonia or for Al, but just looking at all the fees and Al mentioned the hours involved, are we going to need to hire more staff? And if so, how many?
I think what, what I'd like to do is hire outside help. So, I don't think we need more staff internally, but we'd like to look at hiring somebody like SCI to assist us, an expert that's been doing it in other cities to get us up to speed. And eventually, maybe we can take over, but I think we're going to need some outside assistance starting up.
Thanks.
Okay, this is a public hearing, and I have one speaker card. Robert Hendricks. Two minutes.
Council, thank you for the time to speak. I'm, I'm a little bit late. I, I was unable to, to prepare comments for the last meeting, but in general, I'd like to urge you to approve alternative two, which is not to approve this commercial cannabis business permit fee. I think this permit ordinance is far too complex for our community. It basically makes the city of San Carlos become a new independent cannabis quality control and quality assurance agency. The California Department of Food and Agriculture already has at least three offices established for this. The current San Carlos proposal will essentially duplicate the duties of these existing offices. The net effect of approving this ordinance is effectively to disincentivize any cannabis business from establishing itself in our community. I think it would be much simpler towards those ends to just simply prohibit cannabis sales outright. Instead, I recommend that you consider implementing a much substantially simple business permit fee, impose a local tax on cannabis sales, and allow for specific focused inspections similar to what we currently do for massage businesses. A key aspect of permit renewal would be meeting the various requirements of compliance QCQA standards as they become established through the new agencies through the California Department of Food and Agriculture. Regardless of the fact that all of these fees that have been presented are passed through to the businesses, I, I do not think the city of San Carlos should strive to become its own separate regulatory agency. Thank you for the time. I urge you to vote against this permit fee.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this matter tonight? If not, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, let's close the public hearing.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
No.
Councilmember Johnson?
Close the public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, 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 yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
And Mayor Griselli?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move to adopt Resolution 2017 dash?
110.
110, the resolution of the City Council of the city of San Carlos establishing a commercial cannabis business permit fee program.
To her second?
Second.
All right, moved in second. Discussion? Or we'll just call the question, I don't see any lights on. Mr. Grokot, you want to talk?
Yeah, I, I'm troubled by this because when we looked at this before, what I'd really like to see happen with this product, if you will, marijuana, is very much in favor of it being used for medicinal purposes, but I think it needs to be far, a lot more research done on it. And that's what I was, that's why before I was in favor of what I was hearing, because it talked about, you know, cultivation, cultivation, you need that to have manufacturing, you'd have testing and so forth. But I'm disturbed by this idea of micro-businesses, even if it doesn't include retail, and then just the idea of distribution, it could go to, you know, a business that's going to sell it to retail. And for me, that's, that's not the goal. I don't, you know, despite the fact that Californians voted to open up the doors to, what do they call it? Recreational, thank you, recreational use, that's not something that I'm wholly in favor of. I'm still on the fence about it. So, I'm really troubled by going through this process and, and having fees and so forth, and especially with these bullets of these businesses that would be included, so.
Okay. Other comments? If not, I don't see any. Call the question.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
No.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
And Mayor Griselli?
Yes.
All right, that's passed. Moving on to 7C. Consider, thank you, by the way, Mr. Survey and Consultant, thank you. Consideration of adopting a resolution approving the 2018, 19, and 2020 residential and commercial solid waste collection service rates pursuant to Proposition 218. Mr. Walter.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Jay Walter, Public Works Director. For this item tonight, we'll be reviewing the, the discussion that we had at the October 9th meeting, and also the results of our Proposition 218 notice that went out, and the council will be holding the Prop 218 hearing tonight. With me tonight, I have Alex Handler from Bartle Wells, our financial consultant who worked with us on the solid waste analysis. And in the back, I see Gino Gasparini and Mike Kelly from Recology San Mateo County. So, if there are some questions that come up with terms of recology service, something like that, then we can certainly avail ourselves of, of those two gentlemen in the back, and then Alex can help us with the finances, so. So, the process, just for those who would be following along at home and may not be completely familiar with it, this last summer, Recology, our collection services contractor and South Bay Recycling, the disposal outfit at Shoreway, they submitted rate applications to the South Bayside Waste Management Authority, which is the joint powers authority that the city belongs to for solid waste collection. The SBWMA board reviewed those applications, and there was some back and forth over the period of, of a couple of months in the, in the summer. And then at their board meeting, they approved the revenue requirements, which is the total contractor's compensation, which is Recology, and other pass-through costs that are the disposal and other city agency fees that go along with the total revenue requirement. And the San Carlos City Council held a study session on those revenue requirements and some rate alternatives on October 9th. And at that point, we issued our Prop 218 notice as required to be able to have the, the public hearing tonight. So, a little bit of background, there, the city provides the solid waste, green waste recycling services to roughly 8,600 homes and 1,200 businesses. As I mentioned, we're part of the South Bayside Waste Management Authority, JPA, for the collections contract. And Recology San Mateo County is our contractor, and the rates that are charged are what pay the bills. So, it's essentially, it's an enterprise-funded operation. There is, there is no city general fund revenue that goes into paying the revenue requirement for Recology. And we typically would be bringing the rate, the rate process to you on an annual basis. This year, we decided that with a couple of other things that I'll mention in just a minute, that we wanted to bring you a strategy for a three-year rate, three-year rate setting so that we can be looking at what's going to be happening in 2021. So, under Prop 218, the city of San Carlos will recover costs for providing the, the refuse collection services and disposal costs in the city. And the general, essentially the general rule is that you would have the rates charged for the service that would not exceed the cost of the service itself. So, what we've had in the past in San Carlos for a couple of different reasons, we've had some proportionality issues in terms of the residential cart sizes, the small carts being incentivized, having a much lower rate than their actual cost to be picked up and disposed of. And then on the commercial versus residential distribution of costs, we've had a disparity there. So, we looked at some ways that we could try to solve those issues and be largely in compliance with Prop 218. So, I'll go through the three rate issues that we addressed, and one, the first main issue is, as we go through the next four years, what council approved at the, at the November 13th meeting was a new agreement with Recology San Mateo County, which is an extension of the existing franchise agreement. And so, the costs for that, as having, as have been negotiated with Recology and SBWMA with a committee that was involved there, will go up by about 8.2% as of 2021. So, there is a, kind of a spike in that revenue requirement at that time that we need to make sure that we're planning for. There's also the possibility that the Ox Mountain landfill contract, when it expires, will result in higher costs for disposal. Don't know that for sure yet, but we also have, will also have some inflationary cost adjustments to make. So, this rate issue number one is we're planning for a small increase over the next three, four years to get ourselves to be in position for 2021. Rate issue number two is the residential versus commercial rate realignment strategy that we're trying to employ. Currently, the residential rates recover about 42% of the cost of providing that service, while its commercial recovers 58%. So, what we're trying to do in this case is, we're going to try to slightly increase the commercial rates, but increase the residential rates in order to bring those costs back into more of an equilibrium. So, again, we looked at a 10-year strategy to try to accomplish this, but this is a second rate issue that, as we've been dealing with solid waste rates in the last couple of years, council has, has been clear that they wanted to try to make some progress in order to get ourselves closer to 50/50. Rate issue number three deals with the single-family cart size rate realignment. And when we look at the, the past where there was much effort made to incentivize folks to divert from the landfill, and so the cost of the small black cart or the 32-gallon black cart was, was set lower in order to be able to attract folks to go to that smaller size and divert more for recycling. Well, the time has come where we need to be careful about the cost we charge. We can't have the higher, the larger cart sizes paying a higher rate than the cost that, to service the cart, and we can't continue to have the smallest carts be paying less than what it costs. So, again, looking at these three rate issues, this is the strategy that we took to create kind of a 10-year gradual realignment of these rates. But we're presenting to you for approval, the three-year rate increase. So, again, consideration of a multi-year rate increase. What this does is, as council has mentioned a couple of times in the past, they didn't want to continue to kick the can down the road. They wanted to try to deal with these issues. And so, we've presented what we think is a good strategy to do this, lining up a three-year rate increase, which sets those rates moving forward so that we can be ready by the time the end of 2020 rolls around with our new agreement. But just so you know, that in this case, no matter what, you still have the ability each year to review and revise and change your solid waste rates that have been set. But we feel like setting this sort of target with a 10-year strategy to get to the Prop 218 alignment and to get ourselves to the new agreement costs is a good start at this. So, last meeting, we presented several options for those rate increases. One was just simply, well, let's figure out what it would cost us just to be able to get the costs, the revenue requirement for the new agreement. The second was, the second option was to have gradual increases for the residential commercial realignment alone. The third option was combining it, as I've mentioned before. The gradual increase is to realign the residential versus commercial, the residential cart rate realignment, and to transition to the new agreement costs. And then there was some information that we had prepared that was a one-year transition, which resulted in some very serious spikes in the rates. And that was information, at least, that was available at the last meeting. And we went forward with our Prop 218 notice on option C. And so, that's the combination alternative. Again, a 10-year rate strategy in order to try to accomplish these, all these three issues that we've, we felt we were facing, and it sort of points us in the right direction. And again, council still has the opportunity to adjust in future years if they need to. And again, looking at the table, number C at the bottom, the steady gradual rate increases, that shows you what the, the residential example of the cart size costs will be in each of the next four years as it's projected. And that amounts to, on the residential side, it's a 5% per year increase. Commercial side is 2%. And when you look at the bottom line on this one, this shows you what the monthly cost differences are going to be as it relates to those residential cart sizes. Small monthly cost increases over the course of those three rate years that we will, we hope the council will approve. As far as unscheduled services, these are the services that people subscribe to. Backyard collection, moving carts, or overage special collecting, collections or pickups. And these are ones which, in the current agreement, they're essentially set based on certain factors to be increased or adjusted. And in 218, 2018, excuse me, the unscheduled services are recommended to be increased by 1.72% based on the formula, but we've, what we've put into the approval is 2.5% because the Prop 218 notice accounted for the maximum rate that we could ask, the, we council could approve. At this time, the rates for 2019 and 2020 are unknown. Those will come back, but we hope, based on looking at the 2.5% that we've included in this for annual, each of the next three years, that the, that amount will be less. What we will do this year is, we will ask Recology to increase the, the unscheduled services by 1.72% because that's the actual, but we wanted to make sure that we had the maximum amount that was programmed in for the Prop 218 hearing. Again, looking at our area with the SBWMA agencies, you can see San Carlos, at this point, just the chart based on the single-family residential monthly costs, we're approximately in the middle for the, the agencies in SBWMA. And in summary, again, we're going to be looking, we're looking at increasing costs over the next four years. We believe that we need to make some movement, and council has directed us to come up with a strategy to be able to get our rates in alignment with the costs, and we've developed a 10-year projection to try to adjust that. So, the rate alternatives are developed for the next three years, which will be the first three years of that 10-year strategy. Next steps would be the public hearing tonight. As of 3 o'clock this afternoon, the city clerk informed me that we had three written protests that had been submitted, so I'll let her update you on what the current number is if that's changed. And then with approval tonight, then the adopted rates would become effective January 1st. And so, our recommendations, as identified in the Prop 218 notice, were to approve the 2018, 19, and 20 solid waste rates with annual amounts of 2.5% for unscheduled services, 2% for commercial customers, 5% for residential customers. And that ends my presentation, so I'd be happy to take any questions you may have, or Alex, if financial issue or Recology, if it's something to do with operations.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Walter. City clerk, are there additional besides the three we have?
No, just the three.
Okay, maybe some public folks that want to speak later. All right, questions? Mr. Olbert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Jay. Actually, my comments, good presentation. I'm glad we're finally making some progress on trying to adjust this myriad of things that we need to rebalance and doing it in a, in a thoughtful way, even if it takes a while, at least we're moving in the right direction. Some of the comments that we got in of the, of the three, there were two in particular. One highlighted a number of, I guess I will One highlighted a number of, I guess I will broadly call them, performance issues with Recology. The other talked about the financial impact of rate increases on a family of two senior citizens who, who are on a limited income. And I just wanted to see, or to ask whether or not, in situations like this, does staff normally reach out to these individuals? And for example, the first one who was having performance issues is to look into it and maybe have Recology look into it, see if there's a problem to get it fixed. And for the second one, where, where it's causing a, a financial hardship for somebody to see, to see whether or not they might be eligible for the discount program that we have put in place. Do you do that kind of follow-up?
Yes, and the fact that we just received those recently will do that because I'm sure Recology is very interested in discussing with customers any kind of performance issues and problems because they want to make sure they continue to operate very well within the city. And on the other one, we'll first check to see if they're, if, if those folks would be eligible or interested in that type of program, so we'll reach out to them.
That's great. I appreciate hearing that just because as long as they're getting this information, and they may not know about it or know who to call if there are problems. So, thank you.
Hi, Mr. Grokot.
The program that's in place that seniors, those unfixed income, can apply for, is that a annual reapplication, or once you're in the system, it, it keeps you in the system?
Once you're in, you're in. We verify on an annual basis, so I have staff that will check with those folks who have previously applied and been eligible for the program. First of all, to make sure that they still live in San Carlos, they're still getting trash service and that kind of thing. So we'll just, we'll make sure we follow up with each one of them to ensure they are still eligible and want to be in the program.
And I also wanted to be reminded of, I had brought up two things previously. One was the, doing something with the service so that apartments, apartment buildings, you see them putting out can after can after can. And it just seems ridiculous that that's not handled with, you know, a large dumpster or some other way. Has there been any movement on that? I don't know on that issue.
Really, that comes down to customer choice. So the Recology staff works with everyone who has an account to try to make it as efficient as possible. There are some who have a facility, an apartment complex, that doesn't necessarily allow for the room that a bin would take compared to a few carts. So that's one of the problem areas that we have, is you can't really force someone into changing out four carts for one bin. But the Recology folks are talking to us each year about commercial accounts and multifamily accounts that they want to talk to and have those kind of conversations with in order to try to make it more efficient and kind of a better way to, to get them involved in some of the recycling and organics programs and things like that. So Recology's making an effort at it, but in some cases, the rest, the, the owner of the property gets to make the final call.
Okay. And then, last question, I'm sorry, I had three. You showed a chart of other, how we compare to other cities. Can you put that back up? There we go. So especially on our 20 gallons, we're
Right in the middle.
Kind of in the middle, but we're on the high side. I see everything to the, to the left there is, looks like it's lower. And, but really, my question is, some of these looks like there's a lot more disparity than we have. So are they all trying to do the same thing that we're doing to, anticipating some kind of lawsuit that might come down the pike and?
Well, I, I, I think so. The idea being that everybody was incentivizing, you know, six, seven years ago.
Right.
And, and realizing that their costs were, they were, they were kind of upside down from the standpoint of the cost to provide the service versus the rate being charged. So somewhere along the way, in order to at least try to, to make an effort at getting those back kind of to where they're, they're about equal, it's, it's sort of a protect yourself from some liability, make some effort at trying to do that. And I think everybody's also seeing the fact that the incentivizing worked and the behavior is much more ingrained now than it ever was for people to divert. So that we're seeing lower volumes to go to the landfill, which is a good thing. So I think that means that if you, if you went ahead and bring that small cart price up, you're not necessarily going to cause people to go back to the big carts and say, oh, I'm just going to start throwing stuff away again.
Yeah. No, I asked because, the reason I asked that is because I was trying to weigh our risk on this issue, that, you know, how quickly we need to get these things in balance because it looks like a lot of other cities are worse off than we are.
Okay. And, Mr. Walter, we can, we, we adopted these three-year rates, but we can adjust these if we want to, right? Next year or the year after, they're not, they're not in stone?
That is correct.
Okay. This is a public hearing, I have no cards, but is, is anyone wishing to speak on this matter? Seeing none, I'm entertaining a motion to close the public hearing?
Move to close.
Second. All right, it's tied there. All right, it's moved and seconded. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Griselli?
Yes.
All right, gentlemen, what do you want to do? I guess make a motion, if there's a motion, and then we can discuss it.
I move to, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion, I move to adopt resolution 2017 dash
111.
111. A resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos approving the 2018, 2019, and 2020 residential and commercial solid waste collection service rates pursuant to Proposition 218.
Second? I second. All right, moved and seconded. Any discussion?
So we're looking at what's being recommended?
Yes.
Option C?
Yes. Any discussion? Mr. Collins?
Well, not really, but I was really hoping I'd have some tough questions for Mr. Walter since it's his last meeting presenting to us, but I doubt.
He gets off easy. Oh, go ahead and ask.
You don't have any. All right, anybody else? If not, I'll call the question.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
And Mayor Griselli.
Yes, all right. All right, thank you. Go to 7D. Consideration of introducing an ordinance amending ordinance 1521 for the planned development, PD zoning district, and approving the associated planned development plan and the addendum to the mitigated negative declaration for the revised Hilton Garden Inn Hotel project at 1091 Industrial Road to allow for an increase of 11 hotel rooms without adding to the height, bulk, or mass of the building. That's a run-on sentence. Okay. Mr. Seve.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. In June, the council approved a planned development for a new Hilton Garden Inn at 1091 Industrial with 162 rooms. The applicant has, is interested in adding some rooms inside the building, adding 11 rooms that would not affect the exterior appearance of the building. And Lisa Costa-Sanders, our principal planner, will provide a brief presentation.
Good evening, thank you. As introduced, the item is to add 11 additional hotel rooms to the previously approved development. The project site is located at 1091 Industrial, that's at the corner of Industrial and Britton Avenue. The site is just under 1.6 acres in area. It's bordered by Pulgas Creek and is near the Britton Highway 101 on and off ramp. As Al indicated on your June 12th meeting, the city council approved the Hilton Garden Inn Hotel Development following a recommendation from the Planning Commission. The planned development zoning and the planned development plan allows for up to 162 hotel rooms with a height of 80 feet to the top of parapet, 84 feet to the mechanical equipment, with a floor area ratio of 2.46. Also included a reduced creek setback of 10 feet and allowed signage up to 360 square feet. The applicant requests the city council consider an amendment to the planned development permit to allow for an increase of 11 hotel rooms, resulting in a total of 173 hotel rooms within the approved building envelope. There are no changes to the height, bulk, or mass of the building. San Carlos Municipal Co. provides for the city council to approve amendments to planned development permits at a public hearing. The project complies with the onsite parking requirements with the approved, implementation of the approved TDM plan. When the architect went through the plans that went to Planning Commission, you know, they're, they're in city council, they then finalized those plans for building permits submittal. And working with the Hilton development team, they were able to kind of right-size the project and really finalize some of those details. And in doing so, they were able to gain some additional hotel rooms on each floor, mostly by reducing the size of each hotel room and also some internal reconfigurations. So this is an example of the fifth floor, where three hotel rooms are added. One is by removing a large housekeeping room, reconfiguring the elevator hall, and reducing the size of each room. The overall floor area for the proposed building compared to the approved building actually reduced by 2,677 square feet. So it's actually a little bit smaller. I don't think you're going to notice it when you see it being built, but it's actually smaller. And the project applicant can provide further details if desired by the city council. Excuse me. The city's SEQA consultant evaluated the project with the 11 additional hotel rooms. The analysis concluded that the revised project will not result in any new or substantially more severe significant environmental impacts. An addendum to the adopted SEQA mitigated negative declaration has been prepared as attached to the staff report for the city council's consideration. And here's the formal motion to introduce the ordinance amending the planned development zoning district and approving the associated planned development plan and the addendum. I'd be happy to try to answer any questions, and as I indicated, the developers also here this evening.
Thank you, Lisa. Mr. Olbert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Lisa, thank you, Al. Can you put up the picture of what the exterior looks like, the rendering? Thank you. I suspect the answer probably, this is my question, probably is, yeah, there is some change, but you're never going to see it. But when you described that the way they were get, able to get more rooms in was by shrinking the rooms, doesn't that like change the number of windows or the density of windows and the pattern of the windows and stuff to some extent? Because I presume there's a correspondence between like the windows that I'm seeing here and each room.
Yeah, it would be, you
You're talking about change so small, you wouldn't notice.
Wouldn't notice. And some of it's on the, the internal side where there's actually the, yeah, you would see it from the back end.
Okay, fine. I just, I, I was having a hard time when I read the staff report, trying to see how you could jam more rooms in.
Yeah, it's, it's mostly on the back end where the open parking structure is, then on the front.
So perhaps, perhaps a somewhat more accurate thing, it's not that it doesn't change the appearance at all, it just doesn't change it materially? Or noticeably?
Not noticeably.
Okay, fine, thank you.
Mr. Grokot?
So I'm just curious on the parking issue because I know they got, well, it's on here, they reduced the creek setback to 10 feet, and I, and that was so they could get their parking, surface parking in. So just to explain how, you said it doesn't change anything about the parking. Were they overparked before, or?
There's a small reduction in parking, but they comply with the city's parking ordinance with the implementation of the TDM plan. So there's a, there's a small reduction in the number of onsite parking spaces compared to the approved configuration, but it still complies with the city's regulations.
So I'm trying to understand that they added 11 rooms, but don't those rooms require parking?
Correct. So with, the standard parking requirement is one space per room plus two spaces adjacent to the lobby. So with this 173 room, it would require 175 spaces. With implementation of a TDM plan, that's a 20% reduction. So that brings it down, I think it's to 140 onsite parking spaces, and they are providing 157. So they exceed the city's minimum.
They were already doing that?
They were previously providing a, a few more. I think they've reduced it by three.
All right. And is the architect's name Doug Henning or David Copperfield?
No.
So with 11 extra rooms, are there additional fees?
Additional permit fees?
Yes.
Well, there is a fee to amend this application. There will be additional TOT revenue and to the city.
Right, but excluding TOT, I mean, just because you add 11 rooms, it's just, just the change of the permit, not because they added extra rooms?
It would be based on
We don't charge by the room, then?
I believe we charge on the building valuation and not on the room.
Okay.
There may be some that are charged per room, like a plumbing fee, I'm not sure.
Okay, but additional fees, Mr. Seve? No, we're not, okay. And then the fifth floor doesn't get housekeeping?
I can have the developer respond to that.
No, that's okay. They took away the housekeeping, I mean, what, kind of change your own cheats? I don't know. Anyway. Okay, great. That all fell over like a dead balloon. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this item? All right, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to close it.
Mr. Mayor, I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
All right, roll call, please.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Griselli?
Yes. Okay, entertain a motion for this item, so then we can discuss it if we need to.
Mr. Mayor, I move to introduce ordinance number
1529.
1529, an ordinance of the city council of the City of San Carlos, amending ordinance 1521 for the planned development, PD zoning district, and approving the associated planned development plan and the addendum to the mitigated negative declaration for the revised Hilton Garden Inn Hotel project at 1091 Industrial Road, APN number 046151060, to allow for an increase of 11 hotel rooms without adding to the height, bulk, or mass of the building.
Second.
All right, moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the question.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
And Mayor Griselli?
Yes. All right, thank you. Good luck, gentlemen. All right, next item is item 8A, unfinished business. Consideration of adopting a resolution approving the plans and specifications for the St. Francis Way and Beverly Drive Traffic Calming Project C-1723, C-1704, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Golden Bay Construction, Inc. of Hayworth, in the amount of $522,892.90 to perform the work, appropriating $100,000 from the general capital fund 25 and appropriated fund balance to the project budget C-1723/C-1704, and authorizing the expenditure of a construction budget with continuces in the amount of $602,892.90. Mr. Walter?
That was a lot. Good evening again, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. Jay Walter, Public Works Director. I don't have a PowerPoint for this one, but I wanted to respond to, after I heard about what happened at the last meeting, there was an opportunity for my staff to have conversations with a couple of the neighbors from Beverly who raised concerns at the last meeting. And in your staff report, we identified some of those concerns specifically. And so I wanted to point out to you that there are, in this particular case, with the project that we have that has a, a formally bid set of plans and specifications, that is, the scope is set, we have only some room to be able to make some changes during the course of that contract. When we looked at some of these items, there were some things that involved some striping and some signage and some other relatively minor things. We believe those things can be handled when we have the contract underway and we can make a little bit more of a, of an analysis and have a little bit more of a discussion and we can handle that. But a couple of the items, one in particular that identified adding sidewalk to a section along Beverly, we feel like it's clearly outside the scope of this current contract. Doesn't mean we wouldn't ever look at it or do it, but what we think is that with this contract, the way it is and the position that it's in, that it is, it has, we've opened bids, we have an apparent low bidder, and we're ready to award the contract. We believe that making a change now will cause us to have to reject those bids, it will cause more design to have to be done on the project itself. And at this point, since this is our second try at this project with putting the bids out, we don't want to risk that. So what I would propose, and what we've identified here, is that I think we can work with the residents on some of the concerns that they've identified with the current project. But I think the other concerns, I think, need to be heard and evaluated at a later date. The council will be hearing shortly after the first of the year, the neighborhood traffic management program. That'll be coming back to you. We believe that that is a good vehicle for the neighborhood to be able to, again, identify concerns and then get in a queue of potentially some other streets that would have similar concerns and problems. But mostly, it's looking at what St. Francis residents have gone through from the beginning back in 2013. We've had a lot of meetings with them, we've had a lot of discussions with them, we've moved forward on the project, we've had some changes and modifications that we made until we reached our final agreement on the plans and specs, put that out to bid. And I believe it would really be good for us to get this project in, get it under our belt, and see how well it works. And I think council has already, talked previously about the idea that we would use the, this neighborhood traffic management program, the way that we worked through the St. Francis folks and, and trying to create a process by which these places can be fairly evaluated and also not take a project like this, delay it any longer than we already have. So that's my sense of, of this one, and I just want to recommend that you go ahead and approve the award of this contract, appropriate the additional dollars, and we'll do our best to try to work with the residents on some of the minor things. to try to work with the residents on some of the minor things, but I think having the rest of the Beverly concerns wait to another day is probably the most appropriate thing at this point.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Walter. Mr. Olbert, questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Walter. Thank you, Jay, excuse me. The, just a couple of quick questions. I think I understood your comments. If we were, and I'm not saying I have any interest in doing this, but if we were to delay awarding this contract so that we could do the additional engineering work, which is, and rebid things that it sounds like would be required to do something more than what is currently planned for Beverly, whatever that might be?
That's right.
Are we talking, like, is that a two-week process, a nine-month process? Where does it fall?
I'd say it probably would be at a very minimum six months, because we'd want to make sure we looked at in detail, prepared estimates for what that extra work would cost, identified in the current priority of things, is that the highest priority for the dollars that the city has available to make traffic improvements? So I would say that it would be at least six months, and not only that, but based on the workload that we have going on.
Okay. My next question may be a combination of Jay and Jeff questions, so I'll let you guys figure out who will respond or who will say what. Basically, part of what you're proposing here, what staff is proposing here, is implement what we currently have planned, because it will add safety value and whatnot to the community, both on St. Francis and on Beverly, and that there may be other things that could be done from a more thorough study of and review of the Beverly situation at some future date. How, when do staff think they would have an expectation of doing that work? Is this like in the nebulous future? Is this like you guys will see it in the 2018 budget that's coming before you, you know, for some future date of actual execution, but that's where it'll show up? How is this shaking out, time-wise?
Okay, so the, as I mentioned, the Neighborhood Traffic Management Program that we've introduced to council and will be bringing back to you for your approval in, I'm anticipating in January, what that does is sets up the process by which these different neighborhood concerns on various streets around the city would kind of pass through. So you look at a Level 1, which might be some very simple signage markings or something like that, could be done very easily. We could do it with our annual striping and marking project, which we do every year. And then the others, Level 2, which is something which we feel like we need to have a little bit more neighborhood buy-in on, the need and the importance of that. So that's a process by which we would begin to have these, say, neighborhood streets with concerns of various types kind of line up, and then we would put them through that process. So it's not to say that it would necessarily take, you know, another year or so, but something that's very complex and very many blocks long could take a couple of years to get done. And that's just looking at the way that St. Francis worked.
And, okay, but I'm actually heartened, and I think the people who live along Beverly ought to be heartened, from saying that you're bringing back a process to us, which I recall you reviewed with us, a preliminary version of it earlier. And so there's really nothing in the way of, once we bless the process, of that starting. And, you know, if the project is big enough that it takes two years to figure out how to do it, well, that's the two years it takes to do it, but it's not like you have to wait two years before you can start the process. It's just, once the council is approving it, it can go forward, and probably in part because of the neighbors already have some level of organization about this. It's not just an amorphous thing out there. Okay, thank you.
Other questions? I don't see any. So we have speaker slips. I see here that some folks are sort of ceding their time to Amy Stevenson.
Yes.
I would hope you do not take 10 minutes. I will sign you on mic. I can't do it here, so I'll do it over here, but we'll see what happens.
Thank you, Mayor. Amy Stevenson, I'm a St. Francis Way resident, and along with one of my neighbors, Manny, who you'll hear from in a bit, we have been working with Jay and his staff for four years. And we were very heartened last June when the council approved the mitigation plans to keep St. Francis safe. Although now, since our project has been combined with the Beverly project for bidding purposes, it did result in a lower bid, although now if Beverly residents do not want to go forward, we would kindly ask that if this entire project cannot be approved tonight as Jay has presented, which we fully agree, then we would want to have the two projects decoupled, go out to bid again, and at least start on our project on St. Francis Way. Four years is a very long time. We've been to many, many meetings, learned a lot about the process of government, and we do, I won't read the four or five different comments, just in the interest of time, because we do agree with Jay's recommendation. Thank you very much.
Oh, thank you. Didn't have to ring the buzzer. Thank you, though.
Were you disciplined?
Yes, anyway. I have two other slips here. Florence Nixon, followed by Manny Gabay or Gabet, I'm not sure which.
Yes, I'm Florence Nixon, and I live on the corner of Park and St. Francis. And I just wanted to take some time tonight to thank both the Public Works Group with Jay and with the city council in terms of their accommodation of my request about the design of the traffic calming device in such a way that I can now get into my garage. So I just wanted to say that, thank you very much. Appreciate it. No, it's a thankless job and appreciate the outcome.
Thank you for your comment. If you didn't bring it up, who knows what would have happened. The last, Manny Gabet or Gabet? I apologize if I'm ruining your last name, sir.
It's Simon.
Kind of got it right the first time.
Okay, good evening. I'm here to respectfully ask that this St. Francis Traffic Safety Project be decoupled from the Beverly project. As Amy pointed out, for the past four years, we've worked our way through the Public Works Department, the Transportation and Circulation Commission, up to the city council to try to get speed humps installed on our stretch of St. Francis, and the experience has been like a Charlie Brown movie. We think that we're about to kick the football through the uprights, only to have the ball pulled away at the last second. As a result, many of us are concerned about the delays. Mr. Walter is retiring and could be replaced by someone who is less amenable to speed humps. Over time, the composition of the city council may also change, and members who have supported our efforts could be replaced by others who do not. These delays, therefore, potentially move us even further away from the installation of permanent traffic safety measures. So again, please decouple these two projects, and let's get the St. Francis project done.
Thank you, sir, for your comments. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this matter? Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move to adopt Resolution 2017-. 112, a resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos approving the plans and specifications for the St. Francis Way and Beverly Drive Traffic Calming Project C-1723/C-1704, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Golden Bay Construction, Inc. of Hayward in the amount of $522,892.90, and to perform the work, appropriating $100,000 from the general capital fund 25 unappropriated fund balance to the project budget C-1723/C-1704, and authorizing the expenditure of a construction budget with contingencies in the amount of
Second.
All right, moved in seconded.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Can I just make a brief comment? I appreciate the folks who spoke tonight. I vividly recall in 2013, walking down St. Francis Way, knocking on doors when I was first running for office, and it was like, the first door was like, "Hi, I'm running for city council," and they said, "Well, you got to do something about this street." And then the next door was like, "You got to do something about this street," and it was like all the way, and St. Francis is a very long street. And by the time I got to the end, I got the message that people were not happy, and I appreciate the patience. You know, I wish this could have gone a lot faster, but I'm really excited. This was one of those things that, you know, stuck in my head when I went out and talked to people that, like, we got to get this done, and I'm happy that we're moving forward.
All right, any comments or discussion? If not, I'll call the -- oh, I'm sorry.
I have a very, very quick question for Mr. Rubens. I'm just curious, do we actually have to spell out the dollar amounts to cents?
We don't. We can say not to exceed amounts that are more rounded.
Just something to think about in the future.
Okay. Other comments, questions? If not, I'll call the question.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
And Mayor Griselli?
Yes. Okay, we're going to start. Don't ask me when, though. When it stops raining. Thank you, Mr. Walter and staff, and thank you to the folks who live on St. Francis and Beverly for their comments and things inside. All right, the next is council communications and announcements. Mr. Olbert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to take us back briefly to the first set of comments that Sandy Alt House made in public comment concerning the Carlos Club sign. I actually was interested, I don't know if it's true, I'm interested to hear from a number of people that the club may have closed for whatever reason. And my recollection, which admittedly is a little bit hazy, is a little different from what Jeff described about what we could or couldn't do as far as the repairs on the lighting was concerned. So long story short, I'd like to see if there's, I'm interested in having an item put on the agenda where we could get an update from staff on where things stand, what we can do, and, you know, maybe there's an opportunity, if the business is closed, that we could consider spending some money and have the guy turn the lights on at night. You know, if he's not running a business, maybe he'd be willing to do that if we paid him for the electricity. So.
One suggestion is, I think that would be a great topic for our mini-retreat later this week. What do you think about that?
Sure, yeah, bring it up there. Happy to. Jeff, would you add that to my list of things for the mini-retreat?
I will do that.
Thank you.
Is it a long list?
That's only the third item, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Grokot, thank you, Mr. Olbert. Mr. Grokot?
I wanted to raise something that I became aware of, because my son has gotten into comics, and he pulled some comic books from the library, and, you know, without really looking at them too much, and I looked at them, and I was shocked. I'm going to hold up the books so you can just see the cover of it. It's this series here, it's called Saga, and it's in the, there's a section in the library called adult picture books or something of that sort, and that's where these are. I checked this out today, and I asked the librarian, when you read this barcode and you're, you know, a patron to the library, being 13, 14, 15 years old, gives you their card, is there anything that, you know, flags things and says, "This is adult material, get permission from your parents," or something? And there isn't. And it's true, not only of these things, but he's brought home movies, you know, DVDs, and then I flip them over and look at it and say, "Daniel, this is R-rated for, you know, sexual content and swearing and, you know, our language, as they call it, and violence and all kinds of things." And I remember going through this also with my other son four years ago on some music CDs, and at that time, I was on the, I think Cameron's in the position now, but I was on the board for the library. And I raised the issue, and they did not want to touch that with a 10-foot pole, because they thought it would be in violation of the First Amendment. I bring it to our attention again, because now I have a second son, and similar things are happening, and, you know, I'm not saying my son goes to the library looking for adult material necessarily, but, you know, he's young and he doesn't necessarily evaluate these things, and he brings them home. And I see that as an issue in this town. We just went through a thing where, you know, people talk about our values. Well, is our values to allow our children to get their hands on things that they really shouldn't? I can tell you, if you read some of these comics and got into the material, you would find things that I would hope you would find to be just horrific. So I'm concerned about it. Not necessarily asking the council to take any particular action right now, except maybe go to the library and look at some of these things and see what's available, and then maybe later, we can have a discussion about possibly putting something on the agenda to see if we can move the, we would actually have to move the library district to change